My invitation will begin with a prayer for those that like to participate. And then we'll call the meeting directly after that. For those that'd like to participate, please stand by your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for our continued mild weather and the peace and freedom to meet together to review, discuss, and act upon the business of our city. We thank you also for the participation and input from our staff, contractors, and all our citizens in their continued vetted interest in improving our community. We ask you to continue blessing our brothers and sisters in the Middle East and all their leaders, including ours, at home, who strive toward peace and certainly have gained that this week. It is only you can intervene and provide for us. For all of this, we give thanks. Please continue to be with our men and women in uniform throughout the world to defend our freedoms at home. We ask you to comfort their families until they're safe return home. Keep safe also all our first responders who provide for our safety, health, and well-being 24 hours a day. For this too, we give thanks. Dear Lord, as we continue to strive toward further improvement, may we remember that wise is the listener who doesn't feel compelled to fill up all the blank spaces. And as is written in your word in Proverbs, Chapter 20, verse 12, "The hearing ear and the seeing eye, the Lord hath made even both of them." For it is in your holy name we give thanks and praise. Amen.
Amen.
May be seated. Begin this meeting at 6:32. With a pledge of allegiance, if you would stand. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for First order of business, we do not have our Vice Mayor with us this evening. She is not feeling well, so I'll entertain a motion to excuse her absence.
So moved.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, comments from the constituency regarding the absence of our Vice Mayor? Hearing none. Let's go to a vote. All those in favor of excused absence for our Vice Mayor Iris Bailey, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Nays like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
None from staff. Mayor Hope.
Okay. Anyone else from the dais? And just as an introductory courtesy, with us this evening for our legal counsel is Ms. Derrick, our attorney Derrick Foles, daughter of Attorney Foles, Principal of Foles and Walker. Thank you for joining us and taking care of our business this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, ma'am. Next is I'll entertain an adoption of our agenda as written. I'll entertain a motion to that effect. I have a motion from Commissioner Green, a second.
So moved. Yes. Yes, again.
Okay. Commissioner Green, a second from Commissioner Penny. Any discussion regarding the agenda before us from the dais? Any comments from the constituents in the audience regarding our agenda this evening? Hearing none. Let's go to a vote. All those in favor of the adoption of the agenda for the commission meeting on 10/13/25 at 6:34 PM, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Nays like sign. Hearing none. Motion's approved. Next is our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to consider it as written.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Green.
A second.
And a second from Commissioner Penny. Any comments regarding the consent agenda before us this evening from the dais? Hearing none. Any comments regarding the consent agenda from the constituency in the audience this evening?
The consent agenda includes the bill payments except for this time.
It's...
I'm not likely.
Bill payments? It does include the bill payments unless you have questions regarding that, we can certainly pull that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I apologize for disturbing because I...
Yes, sir.
Sometimes it's kind of hard to tell which is which.
You don't disturb us.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewandowski.
So can any of you tell me, after you approve the... Well, first, I have a quick question, and that is with the bill payments, the bills have not been paid, correct? You have to approve them first and then pay the bills? Am I saying that correctly?
No, sir. They've already been paid.
They've been paid. Okay.
This is a review of the payments through the month of September 30th.
Okay. Can any of you tell me what percent of budget for any given item has been completed once you pay these? So for example, if you've allocated $20 for a particular budget item, you've just authorized a pill payment, what is the percent complete? Do you have that kind of data up in front of you?
No, sir.
Okay. Do you have any type of data that says how much of your budget in total would be completed?
Not unless the comparison data is presented to us at this time. No, sir.
Okay. Do you have any type of a dashboard that gives you the financial status of our budgets at all?
Not currently at this meeting tonight. No, sir.
Okay. So I'd like to remind you that I've been asking this question for at least two years on a regular basis. I felt strongly enough about it that when I was appointed by former Mayor Bailey to the commission to rewrite the charter, we added that in there as a charter item. So I'd like to encourage you to read that document. It's been approved by the attorneys. And you don't have to change the charter to do that. That guidance is in there.
Yes, sir.
Please implement it.
Yes, sir. It's a tool that we customarily use. We're just still reconciling to finish the year. And that is one of the issues in not having a comparison data document from this.
Every time I've been, I've never seen a document like that. As a matter of fact, even...
Yes, sir. And they've been scrutinized with errors in them through this last fiscal year. We have had them. Yes, sir. With the comparison data? Yes, sir.
Presented at this meeting so that the...
Yes, sir.
No, I'm sorry. You're absolutely wrong.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else regarding the bill payments, specific to the bill payments?
No, no, no. It was only the bill payments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewandowski. Anyone else? Hearing none. Let's go to a vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda as it's presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Nays like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Guests for this evening, repairs of the Veterans Memorial. Other, Mrs. Roberta Lopez?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to present a plan that I came up with because I saw a need in Archer. And as you know, the circumstances here with our finances and people in the city, they're just not able to do some things that's needed. And what I'm about to present here is a plan for restoration and repairing of the Veterans Memorial. I don't know if you've been to see that memorial at the Archer Community Site, but I did send out to all of the commissioners and the interim manager and everybody. And I'm sure you have that in your package somewhere. And I don't have a lot of these, but I'm going to read this information because I want it to be read into the public, you know, for the public in case we need the public. I don't know what's going to happen here. I'm going to read this, and then I'm going to go over the proposal that we received for repairs and restoration of that memorial. So I just wanted to do that, let you know why I'm here and what I'm doing. And of course, I don't know if you know it, I do know a lot about stones. I know a lot about concrete, having worked with the Bethlehem Methodist Episcopal Cemetery for the last six years or so. And I think I have enough experience to decide what's good for us. So I'm going to read my letter that I put together. It was dated September 29th, and it says, "Dear citizens and supporters of Archer, Florida, I'm writing for your support and contribution to repair and maintenance of the Veterans Memorial for all branches of the armed forces located at the Archer Community Center, 16671 Southwest 137th Avenue in Archer. Bob Cachet along with other citizens in Archer headed up the memorial project and the erection of it a few years ago." I think it was maybe in 2012. "It is a place where we gather to honor and pay respect to the veterans who have ensured our freedom for so many years. Please see the picture," and I do have a picture. And if you want to share your documents that I give you, I would appreciate it very much. And there may be some over here. I don't know. Would you see? There's another letter over there. Okay. "Please see the pictures of the repairs and flags needed at the site and the proposed cost for repairs to include the resetting of brick leading up to the memorial. We will use an overage of funds, any overage of funds for maintenance around the site. I would like to introduce myself and let you know that I am a former mayor and commissioner of Archer, retiring in 2012. I think I retired just a little bit, few months or so before that memorial was erected." That's not in the letter. "I also headed up the fundraising project for the Archer Community Center during my tenure with the memorial stands. Along with a committee of local citizens, raised $1 million to complete the ACC project. This building serves the community and many activities taking place in this beautiful building since its opening in 2011. It is a place where we come together. I have a lot of respect and admiration of veterans since our son, my son, Wendell F. Lopez is a retired 23-year lieutenant colonel. Please contact me if you have any questions or suggestions. And my telephone is 352-495-3035. And my email is robertaclopez@aal.com. I'm working with the City of Archer Commissioner Kathy Penny to accomplish this goal. And again, we thank you. On my second page, what I did, I put a form together. It's a contribution form. And it's merely stating your name, the business name, if you have a business, contact phone number. And it tells you where to make your check. And also, there are some questions there. Would you like to make a contribution? Yes or no? Would you like to donate your professional services? Yes or no? Please provide your business credentials such as a license, et cetera, if yes. Would you like to volunteer to help with the upkeep of the exterior, not interior, of the Archer Community Center? Yes or no? Your contribution will be acknowledged with a written thank you letter and a planned recognition event once the repairs are completed. And what I mean by that, we may be able to have like a little event for our veterans, invite them in and give them some, even if it's some of Miss Skinner's spaghetti or something like that. I don't know. The Archer Community Center is the only and most valuable facility in the City of Archer. And local citizens and people all over the county worked so hard to make it possible. No matter what happened here, the citizens must step up to the plate. And for more information, you can contact me. And what I've done, I've included, and I'm going to go ahead and pass this round because I have another one. It shows the picture, and you have this in your computer, but it shows the picture of this memorial. It has a lot of cracks around it. And I was talking to a former supervisor with Public Works, Jocelyn Garcia today. And she said, "You know why the cracks started around that memorial?" She said it was because everything was fresh when we put it there. And of course, the building was new and the sidewalks was pretty. And I saw them one day, but I didn't pay any attention to it. The skateboarders started going around and around the circle. If you see this big monument down there, half of it is dark at the bottom. That's because it has accumulated moisture. The monument was purchased by Florida, North Florida Monument Company in Williston. The patio where it sits was done by JAM. That's a company called, what is it, Jim Allen Masonry. And it was done by them. And they did a really good job. I think it was back in 2011 or '12, something like that. So they did it. I understand that the city's been working with JAM for years, according to Josie, even when she was here, which is probably, what, 15 years ago or more? So first, I talked to Commissioner Penny about this, and I showed her what it looked like. And she even came to a meeting one night, and she said, "If we don't fix this monument that's standing there, it may topple over." Well, I have you to know that that monument is made of granite. It's made of granite. We need a professional company like JAM bonded. They have their own equipment and everything to do this job. Because what they, if you look at the proposal that they sent in, it tells you that they are going to, where is the proposal? Oh. It tells you that they're demo and replace concrete slab around monument. 300, don't ask me all this stuff. Slope new concrete away from monument and install 10-millimeter vapor barriers under the new slab and existing monuments set in new crack, in new concrete. Install new concrete curb around monumented base. Clean and remove joint seal runs corking from big brick bands. We have these breakdowns. It has this terrible corking, and it needs to be done again. And it's just sitting there. It's not doing anything for the bricks. It's just, somebody put it there, and I don't know exactly why. The price on this proposal, and trust me, I'm restoring an 1873 historic cemetery out here called Bethlehem Methodist Episcopal Cemetery. We have installed all kinds of stones. I've worked with all kinds of stones and concrete. We put them back in their base. We have an archaeology on our, archaeologists on our committee. So I know that this is a good proposal and a good price. So if you're worried about the price, I think I even said somewhere along the line, and I'm willing to do it even though I don't have to, to help raise the funds to support this. So this is my proposal, and this is what I'm asking you to allow us to do, from what I understand from Commissioner Penny. She's not involved in any fundraising, anything like that. Her goal was to help me get ahold of JAM, and we did. So I don't know what you think about this, but you let me know. Because after whatever decision you make, this is all the work I'm going to do on this for now. And I'm highly and strongly recommending JAM, Jim Allen Masonry, to do this job because they have all their equipment. We don't have to, they don't have to call in anybody and come in and pour the cement. They're going to bring everything and do the job. And if it's not, if it's not them and you get another, say, proposal, the only way I will continue to work with this in any way is that they use everything that's written on here by JAM because we decided to do that based on my knowledge and his. So I need some input, ex put, whatever you want to tell, do with this.
You finished with the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. Before we move any further, do I have a consideration for a motion to consider this any further? For discussion?
So moved.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Green. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. Questions or comments regarding Mrs. Lopez's presentation?
I have a question, if I may.
Yes, ma'am. That's what this is all about. Just because I think there's two parts to this presentation.
Okay. That's what I was fixing to add. So is the city...
I'm hyping myself.
Is the city going to pay this 5833, or we're going to fundraise for 5833?
It's a fu, sounds like it's a fundraiser.
I had planned to fundraise, and I already, I'm donating the first $100 in honor of my son.
Okay.
And Jocelyn Garcia said she would donate 100. She's a Desert Psalm veteran.
But I think to answer our city administrators, if there's a difference, it would be the honor's responsibility of the city for that difference on any proposal that we consider for approval. Is that correct?
I beg your pardon? Say that again.
It's a fundraiser that we have to consider and have you as the sergeant of arms with all the funds raised for it that we have to consider and approve, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
In other words...
And my question, my question, Ms. Lopez, is if we say, okay, begin, there will be a receipted document for each contributor besides the letter of their amount and what they had and something that you keep for record as well?
Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, we had...
Not challenging at all, Ms. Lopez. I'm just, because we need to do it correctly as we've done other fundraisers.
We need to do it correctly.
Yes, ma'am. Whoever that, I want to call it sergeant of arms or that person that's the custodial caretaker of the fundraising. You just give a receipted document, then go within whatever that balance is to be paid. It would be that the responsibility of the City of Archer. Thank you. All right. That's just one question I have. Are there other questions from?
In reference to that, Mayor, can I just...
It's not a challenge at all. It's just questions.
I just wanted to say something. When I did the fundraiser for the Archer Community Center and raised a million dollars, and I believe Deanna was here part of that time, and I think I brought it in here one night, a thick document like that. I kept track of every dime, including a $4 donation that was given to me on the street, name, address, phone, et cetera.
Not challenging at all, Ms. Lopez?
No, I know you know, I just want, I just want the public to know.
It just needs to be covered.
I think it's important for the public to know that they are dealing with someone who's professional.
Not challenging your scruples or standards at all, Ms. Lopez.
I also work for United Way, and I raised 1.6 million annually in Hillsborough County for five years.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you for answering the question. Any other questions for the dais?
May I ask the city attorney questions? So...
Is this legal to do it this way?
Well, yes, because the checks will be made out to her, not the City of Archer. Is that appropriate?
I don't think that gives me a lot of pause.
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure.
Well, what you, what we can do maybe is something like GoFundMe, or either we can do, open up a checking account and maybe put the mayor's name on it along with mine.
It could be a special holding chart of accounts fund that's tried.
But coming here to the city, I'm skeptical. And the only reason is because we don't know what the state or anybody else is going to do with us. So this is why I was trying to keep it separate. We don't know. I mean, our money may be in the bank, and they say, "You can't touch nothing tomorrow." So I think we need to look at other alternatives as to how we want to control this. Trust me. I don't need this money.
Madam Attorney, could you just give insight on the appropriate way that we'd be able to do this?
I would have it coming to the city. I think if there's going to be somebody who wants to raise it by themselves, if you would like to donate a certain amount, then...
The chief fundraiser, you can do that individually. They all come from Roberta C. Lopez Memorial Fundraising Group.
Right.
As we've done the Archer Community Center.
Well, well, to be honest with you.
And because of...
That was my intention until I spoke to Commissioner Penny the other day. And I said, "Do you think I should put the city on here?" And she said, "Yes." So we put on the form in care of City of Archer and care of Roberta Lopez.
Honorable intent. Fully understand.
Now, there's one other thing I want to say. Even though I am, I may be the...
Custodian.
Administrator of this. I'm going to say administrator. I still expect, and hopefully, the city will do whatever they can to support this because this is another one of those projects that got thrown up under the bus by our former manager.
Okay.
So if you want...
I don't want to be accusational to the former because I've seen children playing leapfrog that weigh 200 pounds up and over.
No, I'm not talking about the cracks.
I have a series of questions, Ms. Lopez. If you would let me ask them, and then we could just move forward.
I'm not just talking about events.
On events. You referenced...
I'm so sorry. Please excuse me, Mayor Hope.
Yes, ma'am.
The camera's out for anybody watching, but you can still hear.
Okay.
Okay.
And apologies for that. You referenced the historical cemetery and referencing granite stones that are being placed, repaired, and done well by, you know, your knowledge and whatever contractors are being used to do that.
Right.
This is an open public site. My first and foremost concern is ensuring that we salvage that memorial stone, one. But even greater than that is life safety issues with that granite and its placement where it is and being replaced. I would ask, and it's not referenced in this proposal, and again, it's not for you to do, it's for the person presenting the proposal. Because of what we've seen happen between 2011 and its original installation in 2025, which is 14 years later, it being a public memorial site, it being utilized from skateboarders, I think was what you said, skateboarding around.
Well, they, she just...
I didn't see as much of that.
She just seemed to think that maybe, maybe the cracks started from that, not the memorial itself.
And maybe it didn't set long enough to dry. I mean, because you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
That was done, and we had a memorial and open.
All the sidewalks were...
I totally agree with that. My concern, and been my concern since, and again, I'm not a marble masonry contractor. My concern was I never saw the depth of that stone placed into the concrete. At least, there needs to be in these proposals, the depth of that stone.
I can tell.
And that's placed to be deeper than what it is. And my recommendation is, is to the consideration, because it being in a very, it's not like you walk up to it. You can sit around it. You can play around it, that there actually be consideration for an apron of concrete or some kind of stone around it.
Do you have this in your hands?
I've read it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can I, can I point out something?
It doesn't state about any supportive burn.
Just please, can I point out something? It says here, "Install," I think that's what it means, 10-millimeter vapor barrier on the new slab and existing monuments set in new concrete. Now, let me tell you what that means.
It doesn't speak to the depth, Ms. Lopez.
I tell you, it doesn't speak to the depth, but right now, let me tell you how it's sitting and what it's sitting in. North Florida went over there with this beautiful stone, and they set it straight down into the dirt.
How deep?
About a foot. And you know how I know? She, I talked to her. JAM intends to talk to her to get the history of what they did. Because he's putting in, like at the cemetery, we put like a base underneath our stones so that we try and eliminate all of that moisture from coming in or whatever, and also to secure them. And this is what he's going to put underneath. And then he's going to concrete all of that in to help to keep the moisture from coming up. Because it's just going to get darker and darker.
I understand. And you're addressing the darkness of the stone and the vapor barriers. I'm speaking about the physical physics required to leverage that large a stone that high. I don't have the answer.
I tell you what I would like for you to do, Mayor. Please write it down, and I'll take it to him because I don't know what you're asking for. No more than what I know that he's going to do.
All you have to do is go to any cemetery and see stones in a pretty private cemetery loc- All you have to do is go to any cemetery and see stones in a pretty private cemetery location. That's not in a public area like this memorial is to be accessed, touched and felt. That that leverage point of the weight of that stone being, I think, over seven or eight inch tall?
He knows it, he knows it. He knows all of this.
My primary concern is life safety issues and whatever proposal we look at, we need to ensure.
All I want you to do is to write down what you want me to ask him. Because I don't understand, because I've, I understand what he's gonna do.
I'd be glad to give that to you once we give that consideration, but do you understand what I'm saying?
Of course I do, of course I do.
Because it's been played as a playground equipment and been touched and felt by the public because of its access to it.
Of course I do. Also, you need to put some new flags up there like now.
Okay, that has nothing to do with what we're discussing right now.
It's on this proposal.
Okay, that's the extra fundraising monies of keeping up other things, correct? Is what you're proposing in that, and that's something that as the administrator of your fundraising campaign, you can choose to, to elect to do whatever you want with those funds.
My main goal right now, sir, is to do this monument if you want me to. My other thing is that if you want me to raise the funds to try to get it done using my name, my name is good. So what do you want to do?
This isn't an order, they didn't point it on, Ms. Lopez, and all due respect to you.
Tell me what you want me to do.
I, I'm bringing up concerns about any proposal that we look at, that's all. Based on that, are there other questions at this point?
Yeah, whatever y'all want me to do, because I'm trying to help and that's it.
Yes ma'am, I, I can't, can't commend you enough for that effort at all, because it needs to be taken care of, if nothing else, from the, the darkening of the stone. Moisture vapor issues and also.
It's the respect for our veterans.
And structural issues of this very large stone that is leaning and, and loosening, which is a life safety issue for a public access building and community center.
Just let me know what you want me to ask him to include on his proposal as far as the depth. Which we've already discussed most of this stuff and I know what he's talking about when he's talking about.
If we can keep moving forward, I think we've cleared up one of the two concerns or issues I had, and that is fundraising is always an opportunity for anything. Any municipal group does, and we certainly appreciate that, whether it's church group, whether it's an individual, whether it's GoFundMe as you spoke about, whether it's you as the administrator in this. You can begin that at any time, I, I think that she would like, if it's personal.
I had planned to.
And you're the administrator.
I had planned.
Yes ma'am, I, I welcome that, thank you very much.
I had planned to.
I think on this, we need to consider the proposal and I think we need to be very clear in the structural identification of the depth and that if possible. It, it needs to be deeper than it is now and it certainly, certainly should not be, not considered to not have an apron around the bottom of it by either. Concrete or marble or something to that effect or recommendation.
You say you don't want an apron around the bottom of it?
It's not what I want, it's what the recommendation is from.
I think, I think on here it says a barrier on the new slab.
A barrier is a, is a moisture barrier, it could be plastic wrap as a barrier, I mean, it, a barrier is not a structural.
So, so can I ask you one question?
Stabilization of a stone.
Can I ask you one question?
Yes ma'am.
You said you don't want anything coming up around it.
I did not say I didn't want that, I said it may require that because of the height of that stone and the weight of it and.
And he mentioned that the other day.
Key, key, Ms. Lopez, is the fact that children or anybody can go up in their, in their grief and lean on it. And if it's only twelve inches in the, in the, in the ground with a concrete pad of four inches, that's not gonna stabilize ten thousand pounds of marble.
I'm trying to understand what you want and guess what?
I, I'm not a contractor.
But can I talk to you a minute?
It's a structural concern that I have with me.
Can you let me talk a minute?
I, I wanted to finish and then you can have the floor.
No, 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 you've already said this three times.
What?
And I already understand what you're talking about really, but I want you to put it in writing. So that this gentleman can do what you're asking him to do, that's all.
Or a recommendation to us.
A recommendation to him what he needs to do. And I'm sure he'll do it, he even mentioned to me that he may have to put like boulders on the side to hold it, look. It's sitting in one foot of cement.
What would you like me to look at, Ms. Lopez, I'm right in front of you, I'm looking at you.
It's, it's, it's one foot of, in the ground right now and sitting down in some sand and some cement.
Yes ma'am.
Nobody's pushed that over, that granite weighed tons. It is, it's, it weighs a lot, it's granite, it's about, I would say about that thick or so or more. And it's about four or five feet tall and nobody's pushed it over yet. It's been fourteen, well, twenty-twelve, is that fourteen years?
It's not stable with the concrete cracking around it, Ms. Lopez.
We know that, that's why I'm here.
That's all I'm bringing up is another factor in any proposals, what structural enhancement do we need under the ground?
Do you want me to do this or not? That's all I'm asking.
I think we've already addressed, you can move forward with any fundraising because we will certainly act on this, the other question.
I just need to know if you want me to do this or not.
Excuse me, Ms. Lopez, the other question I have is there an opportunity to use our wild spaces, wild places, since this is a public area for any consideration for. Gathering the remainder of the funds if the fundraising activity doesn't meet the needs of the agreed upon proposal once we look at it.
As far as I know, yes.
We could use it.
Why don't the city just help with the fundraising?
Excuse me?
Why don't you help with the fundraising?
Ms. Lopez, we may not even need it if we use it for wild places, wild spaces, but we never turn away the citizens vetted interest in anything in our community and you know that well. Nobody knows that more than you. And due respect.
Yeah.
Are there other questions regarding this proposal and taking it without getting any other proposals or considerations? I have one other just question, Ms. Lopez, you may be able to answer, I don't know, based on this one, just so, as we build what we need. We know we need that enhancement of structural strength below the ground of some recommendation from any contractor, that's number one.
Let me.
I'm not the contractor, I can't tell you or the contractor how deep to make it, I can make a recommendation. But it needs to certainly be deeper than what it is now with dirt and four inches of concrete sidewalk around it, keeping it from having any leverage for cracking of the concrete sidewalk around it.
I wanna, please Mayor, I wanna, I wanna say this.
I'm asking the dais a second and then you can sort of go back to more of your dialogue.
I just wanted to add more, one thing to what you were saying though.
Uh, on that subject I just talked about, or?
Yeah, about the cracking and.
Yes ma'am.
And all of that.
Okay.
And also you're talking about the proposal by this man named, this Jam people, right?
The one that's presented to us tonight, the one, yes ma'am.
Jam. Okay, let me tell you, whatever's written on this proposal right here. If you get, say, a new, other proposals, which, you know, feel free. But if it's not exactly as planned on here with your recommendations, I won't have any parts of.
Ma'am, you already said that one time to us.
I don't remember.
Yes ma'am, you did say that one time to us, we fully are vetted and understand that, understanding from you as a fundraising opportunity. Are there any other questions from the dais regarding consideration of this proposal or comparisons to anything else?
So, let me understand, so Ms. Lopez is gonna take this on as a, as a fundraiser, this is gonna go in her name?
Yes, privately, for it to be responsible.
And, and I, and I think what she's asking you to do, Mr. Mayor, with all your concerns, is to write them down and she can have Jam.
Certainly have Jam consider them and his proposal.
Address those, yes, to address all of the safety measures that you're asking for.
And her concern back to us, if anybody else, if we want a second or third proposal, it needs to have all the components of this one, plus anything we add for Mr. What is the gentleman's name outside?
Well, you can change, you can change the components, but I won't be involved. Because I know that this is a good one.
So I think basically.
But you've asked me to, to put in consideration of the extra structural strength we need below the ground. Well, that would be added to this gentleman because he, he may have to have a change in this price.
Exactly, I accept.
In fairness to any proposal we consider, it's like, do, I appreciate you accepting that, ma'am.
I accept that, but, but I'm saying though, any other proposal should have this information that I know that's, that's important right here. In, in their proposal as well.
Yes ma'am, we always do that in RSVPs, in RSVPs.
I said a third time. So just let me know what you want me to do, because I'm gonna be leaving soon.
And, and the only other question I have of this one is, did he have any idea of, I'm sorry. I mean, you, you presented it to us, who am I to ask the questions of the contractor that's proposing this?
From now on, you ask the contractor, I've already said everything I can say.
Okay, I, what was the?
And I would appreciate it too, if y'all, if you approve this and everything, that the, the, the people in this audience would join in and help me with this. Because if you had, if you're veteran or you had sons and daughters in the military, you know how important that is, and when you have one that's been in there twenty-three years, yes, do something.
Ms. Lopez, do you know the timeline that he's, that he spoke to to finish this project?
No, 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 we haven't said nothing.
Okay, so he doesn't know how long it would take?
Tonight is my presentation.
Okay.
Tonight is the time that I come before you and see if you guys want any help with that memorial.
We certainly appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Ms. Lopez, um, I think there is a timeline on your proposal.
How long it took?
That's down here.
Oh, is it?
About for thirty days, this proposal may be withdrawn.
How long will the project take?
Would the project take, that would probably be a question for them.
If, if accepted within, yeah, if not accepted within thirty days.
Right, so, so I, 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 I think you all are just going around in circles.
I'm not.
If you just want her to, you know, go and ask about those questions as far as the safety measures and so forth, because we've been on this for about forty-five minutes now.
It's been too long.
And, um, if she could check on those safety measures for you. And to see if, you know.
Wild space.
If it would be included with this proposal or if there is a higher price. And I think that possibly, probably come back with that and then maybe we could take a vote on it.
I don't think he's gonna do a higher price.
Okay, but, but just, just check with them about the safety measures that he's asking.
Let me ask you one more question.
There's two questions of this, this proposal that I have. One, what is his structural recommendation to stabilize this large stone that right now sounds like it's only at most twelve inches of dirt and concrete? Glad to write on mine and hand it to you tonight. The second, the second thing is, how long will this project take from initiation to completion?
Right.
Because that will be based on when we might start this project, because I certainly don't want it to interrupt in the next thirty days.
Okay.
Veterans Day.
All right.
Is that fair?
You don't want any interruption, maybe we'll have, maybe he'll have it fixed by then, who knows, you never know. No, he won't have it fixed, because I'm not gonna raise the money that fast.
And that, and respected that, that's why we already said, wild spaces, wild places money could be used appropriately for this public application.
Whatever y'all want me to do, I want it in writing, because I don't want you to come back later and say, Roberta didn't do this.
To move this along, I think we're looking for a two-part motion to clarify this. One would be to have the approval from Ms. Lopez to immediately continue initiating her fundraising opportunity for this, knowing the city is going to take care of this. Because it's an asset that's our community center down there that, that is, has access right up to touching and feeling the stone and the memorial. The second part would be, do we want to accept this with the exact additional items, allowing the contract to come back with an adjusted price for our consideration? Or do we want to adjust this and get a second proposal? Like we normally do with proposals, if no one else wants to bid it, then this gentleman would be considered.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes ma'am.
You said you will hand that to me before the night is over.
Yes ma'am, I have a meeting to conduct.
If you could just, somewhere in between, or you can send me an email or text.
I, I'll do it.
That'll be good.
I'll do it by, by the time you walk out this evening with a copy.
It can be tomorrow, I don't care when.
To our legal counsel and to our administrator.
But do you understand whatever you guys want and want me to do and what responsibilities I may have, write it up? And give me permission to do what I'm gonna do, because I don't want to hear it later.
I think the motion of, of approving you to be a fundraiser administrator is, is within your own purview. Because it's private and it's something that you will contribute as you see fit as the administrator back to this project. This part is for us to, to identify and ensure if this dais wants to have a second proposal, to have the same parameters in the proposal. Of which it would be this gentleman included in that, does that make clear what's gonna happen tonight?
That's fine, just like I said.
And if I hand this with those changes, it's something that because it's a city responsible project, it would be something our administrator would do with that contractor.
Yeah.
And then.
Well, you do understand my concern why I want to be the administrator.
Administrator of the fundraising.
Exactly.
Yes ma'am, and that is what you, my knowledge of you and respect for you, that's what you are the greatest at. And the example is the Archer Community Center, were you ever the architectural design specialist in anything in that? No, you relied on the specialists, the architects and the contractors that you had built that.
I was the project manager for a long time there when we were waiting on another manager.
Yes ma'am, I, I don't want to look in the rearview mirror, you know my feelings about that, but I appreciate this certainly and I will certainly have that, so do I have that motion amended?
Okay, well, whatever you can do, you can send it to me on text or email, because I'm not gonna stay here to end the meeting.
Can we just have her get the information that she needs to get for you before we vote on this?
No ma'am, because this is a shared responsibility, this project is gonna be paid for in any difference by the city.
Okay, but it's, but we haven't voted to pay on it yet, so.
That's the second component of, of the motion. One is to allow her to freely go forward with private donation administration and sponsorship.
But she says she don't want to do it if you don't go with that company. So my question is, can we first have her address those questions? Because we can't say for her to go forth, because she's already said she's not gonna do it if we don't go with that company, so my question is.
Well, let me, let me back up on that one. If the company, if the company can offer us the same thing.
That's not what she's saying.
Right there.
Mm-hmm.
That's on there.
Mm-hmm.
I, I will go for it, but if they don't have it, if they can't do the same proposed type, in other words, the duties, the responsibilities, if they don't do that the same.
The task order of what this, of this proposal has to be the same with whoever else comes forward, just like we always do with.
Right, so if you want another proposal, get it, but the, the problem, let me tell you what's getting ready.
Does that answer your question, she's saying get it?
Not, not, not quite.
Let me ask you what's happening right, let me tell you what's happening with me right now. You know I got a grant over there for the community center, I mean, for the BMEC, the cemetery. And I'm working hard on that.
Yes ma'am.
This month and next month, I'm gonna be inundated with taking care of business for that.
Yes ma'am.
I wanted to go ahead and get started like now. If I'm gonna inquire and check with different people to try to get funds.
Yes ma'am.
If I don't get all the funds in a timely manner, which, you know, if y'all want to contribute, that's fine, but I'm not gonna be around here, oh, what happens? If, if I gotta wait for these proposals and I, you gotta bring them back before the meeting next month?
Yes ma'am.
So you can count me out. And the reason you can count me out, if you're gonna get other proposals and I gotta wait till next month for y'all to not have a call meeting or something and say you want to do it, you know, and go.
I think that's in the proposal tonight, that we need to take action on this, but we need to get a second proposal.
But you're talking about other proposals, how long will that take, some people don't even, let me tell you, I'm waiting on right now, I'm waiting on proposals right now to remove all those trees out there. It takes these people sometimes two or three weeks to get a proposal. So you're telling me that I'm gonna put my life and my company, five oh one C three out there on hold?
No ma'am.
When I'm trying to go ahead and do this?
No ma'am, because Lopez, that's why I ask, what, what was your idea when this would start and end, does he know if it's gonna take five weeks, twelve weeks or whatever? Because I really don't want to start any consideration of this, whoever we choose, until well after Veterans Day, which is November eleventh. For those that want to come and memorialize.
Well, I'm not gonna be out there fixing it, but I want to have everything in place. If, if there are other proposals, give them to me and let me look at them, to see if they're gonna match up with this and we get the same price.
I'm gonna recommend we give it to our administrator and then she have us look at those and make sure all of the components of it are equal to what this has and this one in addition to that. That is only fair, Ms. Lopez, yes ma'am?
Come on, me?
Yes.
What are you, sorry, can you repeat that?
If we approve this memorial to be repaired. From a construction company. from a construction company, we have this one proposal. We have, thank you to me, just a structural concern of what will
Right.
enhance the structural strength below the ground and what's their recommendation? And, and honoring this gentleman if he needs to add anything to that, of which I'm gonna put in writing for you, and to the timeline for the project, twelve weeks, eight weeks, whatever that may be. That's only fair.
I just wanna remind all of you.
Can I say something before you say something? So here we have a citizen that is willing to go out and, sounds like it's not gonna cost us a dime, hopefully not. But we have a citizen that's willing to go out and to raise funds to, to, to get this job taken care of, that has bought a proposal. All we need to know is all the safety measures in place, or if they're gonna have all the safety measures in place. I really don't understand what's the big deal. I, I mean, if we have somebody that, that, that wanna take on the job to, 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 to raise all the money to get this job done? Um, I don't know. Help me out?
I don't think the issue is, is the, is the fundraising and doing it individually.
Right. That's, that's, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that we have a citizen that is willing to do that without, without a cost to the city.
But the billing and responsibility is a part of the City of Archer's for the asset that they are repairing, a structural memorial on. So therefore, that honors responsibility lies with the city, not for a private citizen.
Okay.
To-
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna make it clear. I think I'm going back now and I'm gonna make this clear. You either accept this proposal that I brought before you, because I approved it if I'm gonna raise the funds, or you can do it yourself.
And Ms. Lopez, that I have a problem with because that is strong-arming the process that we normally use and getting bids on something and making sure that it's structurally sound as a component of the bid.
I ask you to give me a structural sound stop.
Your choice on whether you want to say that you won't fundraise if we don't use your preferred vendor, but I have a problem with that.
He is a preferred venue. He's, he's got all the qualifications.
Can we hear from Derek?
You have used them before in this organization, according to Josie and everybody else.
Ms. Lopez, can we hear from Derek, um, the lawyer to see? Because I'm still trying to get an understanding of, um, when we have a citizen doing the fundraising, you're willing to do this and to get this thing repaired. What asset or what falls back on the city?
So I see, I see two issues.
Okay.
One with if not enough funds are raised, and I understand that you believe you'll get enough fundraisers, but if not enough funds are raised, then the city would be, would be responsible for that shortfall.
Okay.
And we're gonna look into whether or not we can use the Wild Spaces, um, funds. The other issue is, there's concern about the proposal and whether or not it's gonna be a sturdy enough structure. It's on public property, city-owned property. If something were to happen-
It's not Ms. Lopez.
-to a child, a citizen, anyone, and that structure were to not be stable enough, the liability falls on the city and the city gets sued.
Sued, not Ms. Lopez.
So that's the issue with getting someone else to address that concern.
That's all I'm trying to protect.
Then it may be jam.
So, so that's what I was, I, I, I thought that's what I've been understanding, but we keep hearing the same thing over and over. So I thought the first thing that she asked, write the questions down, let her take them back to that company. Let her bring us back the answers. We may not be able to vote on that tonight. That's, that's what I'm saying.
So you're gonna wait a month?
It may not be something we can vote on to, on tonight.
When, when will you have your next meeting?
November ten.
But I'm just saying, so that to make sure all the safety measures, Ms. Lopez, um, we thank you for, for, um,
Thank you enough.
Considering, yeah, to take on that responsibility for us. So just to make sure that the safety measures are in place and, um, which I'm sure that their company, they are probably in place. But if, if we need, if that's what the mayor is saying, we need their writing, then, um, I don't think it's something that we really have to rush it through, is it? We, it is something that we can wait?
No, it's, it's nothing you have, I explained.
Because we appreciate, appreciate what you're trying to do.
I explained my situation. Right now, I'm free to move on with fundraising, right this minute.
Okay, so, so, um-
So I don't, I don't, that's my concern. I have a life too, you know.
So let me ask a question.
I have to care my husband.
Let, let me ask a question so we can possibly move on from this. Um, if you're, um, considering fundraising, um, only with this company, right? Is that what we're understanding you're saying?
Because I'm not gonna look for another one, I tell you why.
Okay.
What you can do is this.
So, so let, let me finish. Let, let, let me finish. So if you get that from them and there's, you know, the same, all the safety measures are in place, and if not, and something needs to be added to that, maybe the city can, she can check into it, see if we can pay for the remainder, um, from our Wild Spaces, um, funds. And it wouldn't, it, it, I'm just trying to see how we could just, just, just move on with it, if you, if you wanna move on with your fundraiser now. So they may not add much more to that.
They won't.
It may not be a whole lot more to that, so.
I think he would be willing to fix it whatever way you suggest it, and you're gonna send it to me in writing. I think he'll, he'll provide you the information. Because guess what? It took me a while to, to get to this point of even getting this. You understand? Time-consuming here.
Thank you for that volunteerism, Ms. Lopez.
And, 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 and I, I already explained my time and what I'm, what I'm trying to do.
Right.
So I don't have time to go out and get any more proposals now. If y'all wanna go out and get some-
And we don't wanna burden you with that. That's why we pass it back to the city administrator.
And you're gonna let them go out and get some more proposals?
And if not, then Mr. Jam will take consideration of the structural enhancement and the opportunity to raise the price based on what he needs to and to put, there are only two things, Ms. Lopez, and put the timeline for the project, twelve weeks, ten weeks, eight weeks. Because my other consideration is our citizenry and the vetted opportunity coming up with Veterans Day. I don't wanna be in the middle of this project on Veterans Day.
You don't have to do it on that day.
I didn't say that.
You don't have to do it during that period of time.
You just gotta hold another meeting.
You don't have to do it during that period of time.
I know we don't, Ms. Lopez.
All I need right now is, do you want me to do this fundraising for this or do you wanna do it?
Ladies, of our motion to amend.
Well, what do y'all wanna do?
So.
We're wasting too much time on this.
So I will make a motion that we
We are.
Move on, um, with the proposal, under the conditions that, um, these repairs would be, uh, put in with also all the safety measures.
The structural strength.
With, with the structure and everything put in place. Uh, with that, is that a good enough motion?
And a timeline for the project, eight weeks, ten weeks, that's my recommended.
I don't know why we need a timeline though. Is there, because of Memorial Day?
Veterans Day, but the consideration-
I mean, Veterans Day, I mean, is there-
Our staff need to know how long to put parameters, you know, barriers around that to protect anybody from-
For anyone that's going down, do we have a program or something going on that day?
We may have multiple programs during the holidays, Christmas.
Okay. Uh, so with that in mind, they can, they could probably put a barrier or something, even our guys.
I'm not a contractor. I don't know, but that's-
No, I'm just saying, even our guys could probably put something-
Are you guys gonna put out and ask for more proposals? And then we'll meet on the tenth? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that part of the amendment?
Okay, if that's the case then-
No, my man meant, my, my, my propos, my, my motion, I think that I just made, that we move on with the proposal, um, with the conditions of all of the safety measures that he's asking for be put in place.
Okay, do I have a second to that amended?
And use that, and use that company.
With this company, with this company.
With that company.
With this company.
And not get a second bid.
Yeah.
And not get a second bid.
Right, no, because I don't, yeah.
The motion includes not getting a second bid, sole source contractor without a second bid, okay?
If, listen, if I need to add a little bit more to that motion, do I, as far as like, um, prices concerned? Or, or should I say, if they're gonna do it?
Well, the purchasing policy has certain-
Parameters.
Parameters. We don't know how much the city's gonna have to contribute, if anything, and then that determines whether or not we're required to get additional proposals.
And, and with this amount, based on not knowing how much funding-
So let me say it this way.
So when I start my-
Can I, wait a minute, let me make my motion like this.
Okay.
I'm gonna try it the third time. I make a motion that we accept this proposal with Mrs. Lopez heading up the fundraiser to raise, um, all of these funds as five thousand, how much was it again? Five thousand, was it five thousand eight hundred? Eight, eight, five thou, with, with the amount stated.
Twenty-five hundred.
Um, with all the safety measures put in place, if they'll do all of that for that price, then I make a move that we
Seventy-five.
Move on the, so, but what I'm trying to say is, is not where the city would be involved or having to contribute.
All right, just-
Did I make that clear enough?
Yes, ma'am. That you want sole source, use this, not a second proposal, a purchasing policy at seventy-five hundred dollars. So this falls below that. So either state of emergency, life safety, and if you all remember, that's why I started with the life safety issue because the consideration of a sole source proposal vendor being presented to us. And in states of emergencies, life safety, we can go with one, whether it's above or below. That's all in the purchasing policy. This is, falls well below seventy-five hundred dollars, not a concern. Except, I'm the troublemaker. Because it's a life safety issue, I am very concerned to ensure that this repair replacement has the structural enhancement and strength.
So that's the motion that I just made. That's the merger, that's the motion that I just made.
This will be written to this gentleman with his recommendation. I'm not a contractor, so whatever he writes in there, he says dirt and four inches of concrete's good, just like it was before, then we're gonna go with it, I guess.
And that proposal will be added to the other proposals that she's gonna, y'all gonna come back.
No, we're not recommending any other proposal.
It's going sole source.
Yeah, it's with that. If you can get, uh, this job done with all those safety measures for that price that you're-
That's not gonna be a problem.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
You know, I've really been through a lot tonight.
Any other comments from the dais? Any other comments from the-
No, I just wanna say thank you, Ms. Lopez, for taking on this project. We truly appreciate it.
Ms. Lopez, order please.
For clearing this out.
Do we have any other comments regarding the motion presented to us from the constituents in the audience? Hearing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, nay, motion carries, two, one. You'll get the exact line items of the additions on the sole source proposal.
And you will send me the information.
Madam Administrator, could you, once I, we write that in and it goes to you in legal tonight, you can get that email to her so she can move forward with her fundraiser. And that's her only responsibility would be the fundraising.
And, and, and please, um-
Did you hear that, Ms. Lopez? Because this will be a City of Archer project billing with private fundraising.
I don't want it, sir. I just want it fixed. Simple as that. So if you don't mind, will you please just write up everything that you think I'm supposed to know about this? And what I'm supposed to do?
Mayor Hope is gonna need to do that because I don't know.
Well, whatever, well, whatever y'all decide to do, I would suggest that you do it soon.
The excitement is your, is your fundraising project, and whenever you can initiate that, your timeline.
I wanna apologize to the citizens for this taking so long, and I don't know why.
I don't ever apologize for your volunteerism. Thank you.
But I appreciate you for clearing this up and, you know, you're dealing with a pro here. You're not dealing with someone else.
And Ms. Lopez, no rush. You, you certainly prioritize your projects through the holiday season as you see fit. Thank you very much for that. Next item. Public announcements, do we have any? Welcome, Reverend Pisco. We've missed you a couple meetings.
Thank you. I've missed being here. No more Wednesday nights. Reverend Pisco, First Archer United Methodist Church.
For me as well.
Can't conflict with the county and the school system, sorry.
Uh, just two, um, upcoming events that we wanted to make sure the community was aware of and that they were invited to. Um, the first is, we have an ongoing paint and praise outreach, and we have one this Friday night. It is open to the public, no experience painting needed. We just have a really good time. And it's honestly a great place for people to come together and build community. Um, and we listen to great music and we laugh a lot, and it's just, it's, it's a good space, right? It's a good space in our, in our world right now to just come together. And the second is, um, I had sent out some letters several months, about several months ago. Uh, we're looking to host an ecumenical Thanksgiving worship service. Um, Reverend Bailey from the Presbyterian Church has signed on for that, and I'm pretty excited about it. But I haven't heard back from any other clergy and other churches. And so I just wanted to, um, kind of put this out there, that if you are connected with the faith community and you would like to be a part of that, it's gonna be November twenty-fifth at six-thirty. And I really am hoping that we can get several of our faith communities coming together again, modeling community to our greater community and, uh, and learning, and taking time to, to give thanks. Uh, because gratitude is a very powerful force for us.
What date is that?
November twenty-fifth.
Fifth, okay.
It's a Tuesday night. Mm-hmm. Yes.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, do you have a list of the churches that you get, get to? Because I haven't heard this announcement.
Okay. Well, I just went, I went all through the church lists and just mailed what I found online.
Oh.
Yeah, so that's what I did. Churches in Archer. Did that, yes.
At what time, do you have a time set?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty PM, and it will be at?
It's gonna be at First Archer United Methodist.
Here in Archer, not Celebration.
Yep, it's here. It's an Archer event, and we wanna get all of the churches connected if they are interested. Thank you.
I just wanna say, uh, Reverend Pisco, we used to do those with the ministerial alliance here. We used to do them on that Tuesday night before Thanksgiving, so thank you for that.
Five-thirty, six-thirty, and seven-thirty, yeah.
And Green, and I just wanna invite everybody to the farmer's market. A couple of weeks ago, we had someone, Bailey McClellan from the Lautre County Tourist, and she came out and interviewed some vendors and talked to people in the market. And it's a good place to gather. We're having a good crowd, and we would invite you all to come sometime. It would be good for some of our city leaders to show their faces to these people that come to Archer every week. The other thing I wanna say while I'm here is, I know maybe you remember that Chad Johnson, State Representative, came to our meeting last month, and he said that he was expecting you to make some tough decisions. And I'm looking forward tonight to see what kinds of tough decisions you've made this month.
Anyone else? Welcome, Mr. Gene Arnold.
Hello, Gene Arnold. Veterans Memorial, speed bumps, and roosters. Three big items, three hot items. I'm not gonna talk about them, but Lord knows, we've had some discussion about those items. Had the pleasure of going, and I'm, I'm surprised, I know it was this Saturday, but it wasn't mentioned. And they're too humble, but I'm gonna mention it. They put together a fantastic, um, autumn arts and crafts festival where they had a bunch of kids come over and paint pumpkins and just, uh, enjoy the space. So, um, kudos to the Reverend and to Ms. Brenda and, and the rest, the whole staff.
And to our painter. Sitting right there. Thank you.
It was just a nice event. And, and on those lines, uh, it's nice when you mention there's a ministerial, and I'm surprised that the Reverend has to mail things and there's not some type of email list or for all the churches in Archer to get together. And one thing, I'm not Methodist, but I'm so impressed at how she opens her parish or family, her church, up, up to everyone. And, and seems to have these dinners, and maybe they do that at the Baptist church here, and I'm just not aware of it, or some of these other churches, and it's just not well advertised enough. But I know that just because she comes to these meetings and invites everyone, I've gone to a couple, and, uh, it's, it's just very nice. It's nice for Archer. So hopefully there's more of a spirit of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Anyone else? Okay, next is our public comment period, our first one. Anyone like to come forward regarding comments, please. Limit your comments to three minutes, please. Yes, sir. Hello, Mr. Lewis Neil. We have not seen you in around.
Nice to see you.
Glad to have you here.
Even longer. Uh, Robert Lustnapp, beautiful Archer, Florida. I know you guys got a lot of stuff going on. My, uh, uh, minor problem. Uh, I'm having trouble getting a square answer out of City Hall about, uh, getting my driveway repaired where the city tore it up five months ago. So I'm here tonight to get a square answer.
What is that address, just for our record?
It's the Jaybirds.
It's what?
The Jaybirds. The Jaybirds, across from the fire tower on, uh, forty-five.
Is that Jaybird's Nest exactly addressed for that?
Twelve thousand six southwest State Road, forty-five.
But I say, the city, city tore up my driveway five months ago, I've been, uh, when I come to the city. When did this occur? Five months ago. Five months ago, okay. Are you aware of any of this?
Yeah, I can wait for you to ask me.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Yes, I am aware, it's when Cox put in the line, and they broke our main, and we had to pay that large bill for the repair company to come in. So, yeah, there's a piece of the driveway, so they're planning on going to get cold patch and do Archer Woods, so I'm sure they need that to finish that driveway. I'm pretty sure I told you that, Bob, but if I didn't, I apologize.
No, I, I'm sorry.
We have like two people in public works at the moment, so we're trying to get to it, we just need the supplies.
Do you have a tentative timeline to get that approved?
He's gonna try to do Archer Woods Wednesday or Thursday this week, so as soon as they can get out there, they'll get to it.
They have Archer Woods as a priority, and then Mr. Luizneal driveway is secondary.
'Cause they have to drive in there every day, yes.
Thank you for your time. Yes, sir, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else, yes, sir, Mr. Lewandowski?
Yeah, good evening. So, uh, back on September, correction, uh, back in August, uh, I had sent you all an email in regards to my concerns over getting proper information regarding the site plan approval process for the concrete batch plant, that you may all remember that. And September fifteenth, I sent an email with documentation expressing my concerns about what I perceive to be improper approval of the site plan. It appeared to me, based on the documentation provided to the public, that that site plan process was not, was not properly done. And again, this is a process question, this is not a question about whether or not there should be a concrete batch plant. This is a process issue, okay? So I expressed that concern. And then Mr. Walker said that he would review my email, report back sooner rather than later, that's a quote. So I'm waiting to hear back on what the status is. Uh, I'm very concerned that something important like a major project has not gone through the proper procedures as per ordinance. Uh, so I'm very concerned about that.
Okay, we'll get back with you, I don't have an answer tonight, I don't think.
I, she have the light on, so.
Representing Mr. Walker for that.
I, I have a preliminary answer, I don't know if it'll satisfy you, but I do have, um, a memo that was drafted by our office. I'm not prepared to completely present it. This goes along with the agenda item of administrative approval of Platts and RePlatts, um, that is back on for the agenda tonight. But I can guarantee that Scott Walker was on it and has been researching it. I just don't have enough information tonight in order to answer your question.
I understand that, right.
So we've noted that, and we'll have.
But it is on the radar.
All right, good, thank you.
Attorney respond to you regarding that.
Okay, second thing is that at last meeting, former Commissioner White made a number of allegations regarding financial issues and, and particular process, uh, talked about security, talked about, um, and made an allegation of employee retaliation. So I'm interested in hearing about that, I wanna remind you commissioners that you have the power within the charter to investigate and should investigate these things. So, um, I'm waiting to hear what happens with that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Hello?
Hi. I'm Grace Obana, and I'm.
What's your last name?
Obana, O-B-A-N-A.
Okay, nice to, I have your hair.
Nice to meet you. Okay, so I've only been here a couple of years, and I've watched your meetings on YouTube, and I've seen what y'all had to say, and I reckon there is a lot of problems with the finances, you know, so. I don't know what I can do to help as a citizen, except participate and say what I need to say, you know, or comment. I did like what Commissioner Green did say last week about collaboration and working together, and I'm hoping that we can do that. But I was, I think, I think it's pretty critical now, and I'm wondering if you would consider, as commissioners, getting an oversight committee on finance and using our citizens as a sounding board or something like that.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Lopez?
Um, this WRP, what, what does that rep mean on this?
Wilson Robinson Park.
Oh, is that what that means?
Yes.
Excuse me. Um, the other thing too, I did send Deanna, um, a message, I think, today, and she acknowledged it for public records. And also, I wanted to mention that, um, the cleaning people for City Hall and Archer Community Center.
Thank you, Ms. Obana.
And that is on this piece of paper that looks like this, and it's called Crystal Clean MGT LLC. I have asked over and over that we not lump our accounts together. And this is nine hundred dollars for the two places. We've had so many problems with that community center and the record keeping. I just don't think that, that any record should be lumped together for accounting purposes and good record keeping. And this happened so much in the past, and I brought it forth so many times, because I found so many arrows just inquiring and getting stuck. So I'm asking y'all again, do not lump your accounts together. The other accounts that I see lumped together, and used to be, I don't know about now, but Duke Energy used to, those accounts were lumped together, how are you gonna keep track of what's being used at the, at the community center, and what's being used over here, what's being used at, uh, the senior center? That's just not the way you, you keep records. And when I, when, when a person come in and they want public records, and they only want records for Wilson Park, you shouldn't have to wait two or three months, because you gotta go find out and separate them, you know, to figure out who paid what.
Okay.
So I'm asking you one more time, please, please don't lump these records together. I mean, these accounts together.
Thank you. Ms., yes, ma'am, can you speak to that?
Did you see, Loretta did the new sheet, so Lori actually complimented her, so that was really good to hear today.
She separated the utility accounts out.
She has them all separated, she knows how to do all this stuff, so. She's working on a year backlog, just another reminder, so she's doing her best to keep current and then start through the backlog.
Identify subset of chart of accounts so that we can begin that process. And then, only a question I have regarding Crystal Clean, does she bill according to the unit that she's cleaning, or does it all lump into one billing from her?
I believe it's separated, so I, yeah, I just have to find the thing.
Create a chart of accounts for one for Archer Community Center, when she's there every other week, and then here, and we can create that additional chart of accounts through Ms. Ott. Thank you very much. I think problem is solved, Ms. Lopez, you can test us next month, okay? Anyone else, please? Yes, sir, Mr. Tufano, welcome.
Yes, Charles Tufano. Yeah, just wanna follow up with some of the questions that came up last meeting was, you know, how do we stand with getting our budget together and seeing where we stand?
We're still reconciling at this point, do you know how much further we are with reconciliation using Dallas Lee and Ms. Ott?
It's in my report, it'll take three to four months to clear a whole year backlog with her working straight forty hours a week.
To then be able to.
So she'll have to go into overtime if you want it done sooner than that, there's, that's my only option.
Is she willing to do that?
She is.
Okay.
But she's, just remind, remember, she's under, um, temporary placement.
Placement at this.
What we did, Dallas helped me with figuring out the rate of pay.
Uh-huh.
So that came out thirty dollars an hour, because we deducted all of what the benefit package would be.
Yes, ma'am.
From Justin's pay, 'cause that's what's sitting in the budget, just so you know how we got to the thirty dollars. So it would be, as long as you know, it'd be forty-five dollars an hour. That's not what she's making.
To expedite.
She's making much less than she should be, but you know how that works.
Based on her skill set.
Yes, yes, so just so you're, if you guys want her to, she, our doctor today, she's ready to start.
Not because Mr. Tufano is up here asking for the third time, and Mr. Lewandowski is pressuring me about profit and loss, which he's certainly all valid.
So it's what, three to four months?
I entertain a motion to consider additional staffing expense to get those reconciliations done, because we were charged with the county, Luttrell County, to get that completed back in March, and it is now October, and going into the new fiscal year.
What does this involve, Deanna? Uh, Mayor Hope, what does this involve?
Monthly bank reconciliation statements that then create a profit and loss.
No, I mean, what needs to be done, data entry, is it simple data, is it just a matter of data entry?
If it was simple data entry, we would be good to go, 'cause she could work on one fund, I could work on the other. You have to, some of the bills are entered, but not the payments, some, nothing's entered. Some, you got the reverse, it's a payment entered, there's no invoice. So she literally gotta go back from the beginning of the fiscal year and try to match all this stuff, and then separate it all out on the profit and loss line, so.
To create the profit.
And she's extremely detail oriented, as you can see, so she's not, and just rush through it.
And no excuses, but we've had the clerk out for three weeks, a medical, and Ms. Ott has been at the window as a clerk a lot of the time.
Here's what I'm gonna say, I have, um, a major in business administration, I have a minor in accounting. I am retired, I would be happy to come in to get this thing done. You have my number, I'll give you four hours a day until this gets done.
Thank you for that dedication.
But I have a minor in accounting, I can do data entry, and I can do reconciliation.
Reconciliation function, thank you. Will I entertain a motion from Ms. Ott to expedite getting this completed? Now, with the additional assistance, say, you, through your autonomy, if you would like to see if there is a relationship that could be done. So, that, that's up to you, I'm not, the motion is not that. If the motion is for the.
So are we in a place that we can afford to do that now?
At the moment, we are, 'cause employee is no longer here, so, um, of course, I have the posting, we have the posting up for public works, and then, you know, like I said, what was for the accounting person is being covered by what she's being paid, Loretta, so.
This needs to get done.
So what, that person who was being paid that's not here anymore will be divided, and I was gonna use that for the overtime, and I know there's kind of some public works working, all that will be covered by the employee that's no longer here, I mean.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So my time would be free, obviously, I'm gonna volunteer, so.
Thank you, Mr. Tufano. All right, do I have, entertain a motion or consideration to expedite this, we don't need to wait till January? To expedite the reconciliation process that should have been done in March of twenty-twenty-five.
So I make a motion, um, to expedite.
The reconciliations.
Okay, the reconciliation that should have been done, or was supposed to be done as a march.
By utilizing an overtime.
By utilizing, um, the account specialist.
That we have now, Ms. Ott.
By utilizing the account specialist, uh, by utilizing overtime for the account specialist.
That's, yeah, thank you, not trying to guide you, that's, that's what we need to have approved.
I, I second, but with question, can I?
And if it was gonna take four months with that current, now with the overtime component put in there, and knowing this has to be expedited, the opportunity for volunteerism to assist if there's a relationship that, you know, of trust or whatever that, you know, between Mr. Tufano and Ms. Ott.
Okay.
We could reduce that four months, 'cause I certainly don't wanna wait until January. Not just in respect to Mr. Lewandowski, but I don't wanna wait. I, I need it, I mean, I need to see it now.
We got a motion on the floor that needs to be seconded.
I second.
Have a motion and a second, any other conversation from the dyes? Any other conversation from the constituents in the audience regarding?
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Penny, I'm just trying to expedite the meeting, I'm sorry, Mr. Arnold.
How much longer you think with the overtime that this is going to take, will this?
And the volunteer, as a put.
It kinda depends on how long, how many hours she can put in, 'cause of course, we're already here quite a bit, so she'll probably be on weekends here, I'm imagining, but it just depends on how many hours she can work. So hopefully, yes, we can cut it in half, and then I can get with Mr., with Loretta and Mr. Tufano, and see if there's something that he can do to help us, 'cause like one of us can be update mode at a time in the QuickBooks, there's only two computers out of the QuickBooks, and one of them's mine, and right at the moment, employees can't be on my computer, 'cause of some stuff I have on there.
And once you speak to Mr. Tufano, if there's a schedule that's convenient for you, then we can get creative. Thank you, Mr. Tufano. And it could cut it possibly in half, I mean, so, we might have a Christmas present?
I would hope, that would be awesome.
Sorry, I'm, I'm wishful thinking, okay. And just speak with Dallas too, and just see, you know, what, what he's thinking and what they can do to expedite, okay? Did I answer?
Yes.
Yes? Any other comments from constituent, yes, sir, Mr. Arnold, I'm sorry.
I would recommend against overtime, I don't think that's, I don't think we're in a position, even if you say that there's money. I, I am, what I would do is, it doesn't seem to make sense to me to have your accounting person, who is, you just said, very valuable, doing front desk duty. Now, if, I understand that if someone's out, I would then say, hire someone else for that position. Get someone at fifteen, twenty dollars an hour, whatever it is, put them out there, get them trained, have another resource, get some help, get an army, get some help, I keep telling you that.
Yes, sir.
Well, again, I'm just giving you my opinion, and my opinion is, get some help, but paying forty-five dollars an hour or eighty-five dollars an hour is crazy to me, okay? With that said, I disagree with Mr. Tufano on most items. However, if he has a background in accounting and is willing to come help for free.
It's a, it's a component of the Citizen Advisory Committee with targeted, uh, aspects of it. One of them we'll speak to tonight, that you're gonna bring up as an item. They don't wanna call it Citizen Advisory Committee, I understand, but this sense of volunteerism, just like we spent forty minutes on tonight earlier about safety, life safety issue of the monument, same thing. It's a sense of volunteerism, and I'm embracing it, and I always have.
And as we should. If, if there are qualified people, and, and my quick question for legal is, I don't know, with all due respect, if there's a confidentiality or something that has to be done, or whatever that is on what he does, and whose water meter bills he sees, anything like that, I would think that there's just something for somebody volunteering. But with that said, I applaud his efforts, and I would say, no overtime right now, we just can't afford it.
Okay, thank you for that input, anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Kosicki.
Bob Kosicki, citizen. Hey, what kind of permitting process do we have for trees?
Now, my question is, uh, do we need a permit if they're dead? This second is, how big a tree can be cut, or needs a permit to have, be cut?
I, and I'm speaking on a term, I don't think we have any permitting specific to our codes and ordinances in Archer. The county has one that the City of Gainesville has adopted, so. But it's up to each individual municipality.
So we don't have anything about trees?
I don't think we have.
We only have the historic and the, what's the other term? If they're over the hundred, if they're on the historic registry, then you can't take them down unless a certified tree surgeon, I believe, has declared that it is, yeah, is diseased. Or it's a life safety issue, other, other than that, no, we do not have anything that regulates trees.
And we don't have that many identified trees in Archer, then, I, I only know one in my yard, so, 'cause I've taken down a couple, a hundred and thirty-five year old plus.
I've got a couple, but that's not the point. Okay, so, you can clear cut, you can do just about anything you want with trees.
Your insurance company says it's your responsibility, I know that, yeah.
I'm not talking about falling on somebody, whatever, and obviously, to trim them, you, you better do it, because that's, I think the rule has changed also. Uh, if it falls out there, you gotta, you gotta cover it instead of the person, it's in their yard or whatever, that's changed a little bit.
And if you have a contractor that does it, they should check for permitting responsibility. I mean, I know the two hundred and twenty-five year old trees that we had to have removed, one fell, whatever, that, that was the contractor's responsibility, I didn't do it, I mean, but the one that killed the building years ago, that. 'Cause we were concerned, okay, you know, do we have a right to cut this tree up and it fell on a building?
Right, I'm, I'm just trying to get a, figure out what's.
And did we have to plant a tree back, I mean, like it is in Gainesville, I just, I know that's the ordinance that Gainesville has. You cut one down, you have to put two back, I think it is, so.
Okay, that's what I was trying to figure out, what part of that.
Deanna, I don't think we have such an ordinance or anything to that effect, no, sir.
Okay, um, but just bringing up the fact that, uh, this weekend, the Archer Lodge had an open house, that really good, um, presentation, uh, told about the building, the historic area, they got all kinds of historic stuff from back, way back when, and they're trying to, uh, integrate their historic stuff into what they do, the Archer Lodge.
Lodge, I'm sorry, I did not.
Yeah, because they put on a little program this weekend.
The one right here.
Yeah, the, the one right here.
St. Phillips, okay.
So that used to be the Wells Building and all, all the different things.
That's what they were doing.
So they have all that history there, and so they were presenting some of that this weekend.
What time did it start, because on. What time did it start? Because on Facebook.
On Saturday. Why didn't it come Saturday?
When I passed by there, it was one truck and I didn't know what he was, he was doing because it was on Facebook. And I said, well, I'm gonna hit the church, which I did.
Because that's what Linda did. She hit the church and then we went there.
And then I was going there, but I didn't see any cars. And then I looked on Facebook later. I said, oh, they did have something because I, I relooked at it. I said, well, maybe it's, because when I, I put it in my GPS, it gave me the Archer Road because it said seven miles. And I was right by it and I said, I know that ain't seven miles, seven feet maybe.
Yeah, so that was, that was ten o'clock on. I don't know the time they stopped, but they served, they served meals. They had all kinds of meals and stuff.
I was gonna hit both of them. And when I passed by, it was, when I went to the church, it was eleven o'clock. And it was one truck there. Nothing else. I said, well, I don't know.
Yeah, I had never been in the upstairs. That was, that was totally new to me.
I was gonna hit all three of them because I had three things to go to.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, here and then let's move on. Planning calendar?
Sorry. Alright, so we have the trunk or.
I'm sorry, I didn't vote. I'm sorry. I'm trying to expedite.
Keep on going.
We have a motion and a second for um the approval of using overtime for Ms. Ott, the account specialist, to ensure that we remedy and complete the reconciliation current and at least half the time that was presented to us tonight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm a nay.
Okay, aye as well? Nay is like sign?
Nay.
Nay. Passes two to one. And thank you, Mr. Tufano, for your volunteerism. Anyone else? Okay, now we're going to planning counter. I'm sorry.
Alright, so we have the trunk or treat on Friday, October thirty first, at six to eight at Wilson Robinson Park. I know the library is like sponsoring it, but we're co-sponsoring it as well. And then there's the City Commission meeting on Monday, November tenth at six P M. here at City Hall. And then City Hall will be closed on that Tuesday, November eleventh, in observation of Veterans Day.
Okay. Full business. Intend to item one, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, designating the city manager as the administrative authority to receive, review and process final plat and replat submittals tabled from September tenth. And we'll discuss it and act on it tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, your correct this was tabled from September tenth. It's my understanding that the commission wanted to get some more information. This is a resolution that stems from Senate Bill seven eighty-four that requires plat approvals and replat approvals to be processed administratively rather than through public hearings. We do expect that this new legislation will be litigated um as a violation of the home rule power. But while it's still in effect, all cities and municipalities need to comply. So I'll just read the resolution by title only and then I would recommend approval. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the City Commission of Archer, Florida, designating the city manager as the administrative authority to receive, review and process final plat and replat submittals, designating the city manager as the responsible administrative official for approving, approving with conditions or denying the proposed final plat or replat.
For consideration discussion, have a motion? Okay?
So moved.
Okay, a motion from Commissioner Green, a second from Commissioner Penny. Any other discussion from the dais regarding this matter? And what's been brought, the only discussion I have is what's been brought forward is that um that validity of our, not only just current interim administrator, but not having a, an official planner by contract or otherwise that would approve this, that that we need to go other sources to have this approval versus introducing this. And that's an economic issue to consider, um, and I certainly have for a month. Based on this and based on referencing North Central Florida Regional Planning Council and their recommendations, this is within the purview of what other municipalities our size do. Not that, you know, they, they can't give any authority to say do it. They're just, a recommendation is that this is what smaller municipalities do to assign somebody that administrative authority. And that's what basically this does, when it's within the purview of a regular permitting process. Has nothing to do with conditional use permitting. Any, any discussion or comments from the constituents in the audience regarding this motion? Yes, sir, Mr. Lewandowski.
So uh it, so I understand why this has to be done. I know this part of this has to do with some of the stuff going on at the state. However, I think that there needs to be a requirement that the city manager must seek the professional opinion of a planner and an engineer. I understand that we're a small city. I understand that we're understaffed, but it is the cost of doing business. Um, and whether it is the current interim manager or another city planner and city manager who's coming sometime in the future, you need to have professional advice. You know, if it's a small city, a small plat, not a big deal, obviously. But when you have, and we have already one industrial plat in front of us, there are other ones that'll potentially come out there. It needs to be done right the first time. And at least every city planner who sat in that chair since I've been here has not had the background or the experience to make those types of decisions themselves. So it needs to be done with a professional, just like if you're gonna have something done at your house, you ask a professional. You may make the final decision, you ask a professional. You have a fiduciary responsibility and ethical responsibility as commissioners to make sure we do things the right way. So please just don't vote on this thing and say you have this power and not make those requirements. It is just not ethical. Okay?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Comment regarding this motion on the floor? Okay, and to that end, and Mr. Lewandowski's vetted concern, I will ask you a question, not that you're on the dais for testimony or whatever. When you have any questions of a planning capacity, what contracted service do we always utilize to go to, to have those answers currently?
I always go to North Central Florida Planning Council.
Thank you, ma'am. And that's not a loaded question nor a loaded answer. That's just, and it, in my tenure as your commissioner and mayor, you, you know my feelings about North Central Florida Regional Planning Council. I utilize and consider them of the highest referencing authority based on the contracted service fee and their ability to review master plans as with their master planner, sir.
Yeah, so in, in case in point.
Based on what we've done thus far.
Right, right. So but case in point, you've just had this happen, and this is why there is the city attorney involved, uh, in that the North Plant, North Central Florida Planning Council had said you should do X and we didn't do X, okay? So in that particular case, again, I won't go through the whole email again, but basically they said you need to have these two individuals review it and then send it back. There's no record that that happened. So it needs to be a requirement, not do you do this? I get that, that it was, at least part of that was done in this particular case, the initial part, not the second part. It needs to be a firm requirement, not is this something you do once in a while? Let's do this the right way. Please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we please stop the accusations until we're a hundred percent sure with facts about what I have or have not done?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And just to validate, validate what you have done. Yes, ma'am. Hearing the other comments, all those in favor of the motion presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well? Nay is like sign? Motion carries. Next is surplus property. Just an update. I think that's for information, correct?
Yes, but I wanted to ask you, is this what you were thinking, like when you looked at the cover sheet of the agenda when you asked last meeting?
Yeah, and just keep it ongoing. If we have other surplus equipment come up, I, I just, that was my request is that we have that. Or when we identify surplus equipment or properties or whatever, to just keep us abreast of what has, you know, whether it's in a chart form and it's checked off and date and we got this money for it, whichever. I don't wanna put another schedule of reconciliation in front of you, but this, this would do at this point because at any juncture, we could look up these meetings and put it in a chart form. If we were challenged, what, what did we sell in the last year? What have we done, you know, in the last month to, to continue with the expediting financial recovery, so. Yes, this is fine. And it would be one for property as well, if there was anything. So thank you. Item C, second comp plan and L D R workshop date, North Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Did you kinda want me to speak to that if I have any information? Okay. I was gonna speak to this in my report, but at this juncture, because I said we really need to schedule that second workshop just for our citizenry and our vetted interest in, you know, how are we moving with comp plan amendments? Where are we? Um, just for specificity, our last complete comp review for the city of Archer was done in twenty twenty-one. The last amendment was done in twenty nineteen, I believe. It may be the other way around, but the amendment doesn't matter. The seven-year mandated cycle by the state of Florida is every seven years. So with twenty twenty-one being the last record of documentation of completion into the state of Florida for our full comp plan review for the city of Archer, seven years from twenty twenty-one, it should be completed no later than twenty twenty-eight. Doesn't mean you can't do it earlier, but it means twenty twenty-eight. And the first quarter of the year before that, in January through March of twenty twenty-seven, a, a, an official documented letter must go with this is our year of review, this date to this date, and send it to Tallahassee. And that, that record of letter has to go one year before your completion of the comp plan. And that's where we are with that. With that said, and again, I've just reached out and just spoken, as I think I committed to last month at the meeting, that I would reach out to Scott Coons and just say, Scott, what's your calendar? What do you look like? His concern is that, uh, not trying to get out of not doing it right now in this quarter or whatever. But currently, right now, with the, I think I spoke briefly about the S B one eighty passing in legislation in spring where it basically removed home rule and that ability that the Department of Commerce can usurp at, with authority to cancel or send back any amended comp plan review document. They get the choice to look at it when that goes for comment. It never used to go to the Department of Commerce. But this S B one eighty is a way of quicker recovery, so to speak, is the, the plus side of it on disasters when municipalities on the coast or even in, in internal part of the state of Florida is trying to recover. If they have to um build and do things, there will not be that, what is considered a stagnated additional process of amending um comp plan reviews to do that. So when they're doing that, they're getting kicked back by the Department of Commerce and being rejected so that that expedited reconstruction recovery can get done. So I understand the logic of recovering from a disaster. That S B one eighty currently right now, uh, every year that we make, you know, this year, we've not had any disasters as far, i.e. Florida has hurricanes usually, haven't had tornadoes or hurricanes of a disaster note where FEMA has called in that we know of. If we had had one in this fiscal year, that S B one eighty continues then for an additional two years. That's the way it reads now. So it basically takes away all home rule of being able to do your comp plan, do your reviews, present those things. It takes that recommendation, not authority, but that recommendation review from your council group completely out of the formula so that that reconstruction, whatever, from that disaster, if it was in your county municipality, can, can get accomplished. Understand from the Department of Commerce and Recovery, the purpose in that, but I don't agree with it from the home rule. That's my opinion. It takes away home rule and that, right now, it is such a strong situation. Two major metropolises in, in, one in central Florida, one on the west coast. Both major metropolises have had their plant, their comp plan, their renewals rejected by the Department of Commerce and sent back to them. So they could not get that done. So they're in litigation. There are two lawsuits that are current right now and more to come. So Mr. Scott Coon's recommendation is, is this is coming back before the legislation in the winter session, starting in January through the end of February and then voted on in March. He is recommending that we not have a second workshop so he can speak clearly to what S B one eighty is gonna do and how they're gonna amend it. There's a couple of bills out there already being presented with the S B one eighty. It'll have a different number, but it basically is amending S B one eighty to give plausible outliers to that amendment, to that, to that bill so that allows the councils, the regional councils to operate managed through the normal amendment and comp plan review process. Right now, it's taken that authority completely away from them and that ability to review and recommend. So um, doesn't mean it's gonna, they're gonna end. It just means there's gonna be more lawsuits to come, is what's gonna happen. If you're interested, I'm not trying to promote it, but Wednesday, as of Wednesday, there is a thousand, I'll get it to you in my report, but um, Thousand Friends of Florida website. Um, and they're gonna have a two-hour website invite for anyone like to look at it. It's uh, thousandfriendsofflorida.org, I think. I'll look at it in my report, give it to you specific. But anyone can join in on that, give their opinions about it, or just give their opinions about, about anything and, and this idea of this S B eight, S B one eighty and how it's restricting um your council group, your regional councils from being able to operate and assist in their contractual way that they do now. It's not just North Central Florida, it's all of them. So that's just a current update. And that's the current update on idea of when we might have the second workshop. We will have the second workshop in this fiscal year. It just won't be between now and the end of the next session with legislation. Is his recommendation, so. Any questions about that or this idea? You can look up S B one eighty and see the specifics of it. But two major functions are that if, if and when a disaster, you can usurp going around to comp plan review and amendment. But the downside of it is it takes home rule away from the municipalities from having the ability to process a comp plan, plan amendment based on the vision of that particular municipality. Next is Archer Community Center. Do you, any update other than the forty minutes we spent tonight on this life safety issue?
The floors are on my report. Do you want it now or later?
To do it sometime in this first month, right?
Well, I called Kenny. It's gonna be way more than fifteen hundred dollars. The floor is so bad. He, the, um, the wax is seven, I haven't got all the quotes, seven hundred and some dollars because he needs so much wax and pads. The stripper, he has to go to Ocala because he needs way stronger stripper to get that off the floor. So I'm waiting on that quote. So I think we're talking about twenty-five hundred instead of fifteen hundred.
When it, when it happen, you'd be able to present that to us next month?
As soon as I have the, the full totals, yes, I will get a few.
Because we did commit that we would expedite that in this first quarter or whatever.
Yes, yes.
I, I think the idea was to try to maybe get it done if, if we had any kind of.
Holidays. People haven't rented for holidays. Yes, they do.
And if we had a veterans memorial program or whatever, you know, potentially, which, you know, I don't know if we will or not. So the only program, I know Mr. Lewandowski is the bike ride at this point. You're not expediting of a veterans memorial program, are you? Like you've done so professionally. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but you're.
That's fine. Yeah, no, I'm tied up with the, with the bike ride.
Bike ride, yeah.
And, and by the way, that's not gonna come through downtown Archer. It's gonna go the other direction this time.
I don't blame him.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's, that's what the sheriff wants to do because it's less traffic, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, thank you for participating in that for us.
But that will be December eighth and it will start at about seven thirty in the morning and it's gonna go out through Trenton that way.
When is this starting, man?
It's gonna start at the Amvets Post eighty-eight, which is between Archer and Bronson. It's on the left-hand side. It's across from that.
Raceway, what used to be the raceway.
Yeah, by the, it's right by the raceway, correct.
Oh, say it again?
So there is, it's Amvets Post eighty-eight. It's, it's by the racetrack off of Archer Road in between here and Bronson.
You know where the speed track is on the left?
In Bronson.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah. It's not quite in Bronson. It's actually in the county.
Where the speedway was, the dirt. It's right next to it. It's American Legion, I'm American veterans.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
They have karaoke and.
So hot social spot in Bronson because there's nothing else throwing on there.
Be happy and all the good stuff.
Yeah, it's gonna, yeah, so it's, it's, people start showing there at seven thirty, kickstands up at nine thirty, you know, we're expecting.
And they leave there about nine thirty.
Really about nine thirty. We're expecting, as of right now, about a hundred and thirty motorcycles, about right now, coming out of there.
Halfway from Tallahassee at.
Uh, and it's at uh, live. At Live Oak, at the Swanee County Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, okay.
Yeah, so we'll probably have, I don't know, it, it, who knows how many people will show up, but we're, we're projecting about 300 motorcycles total-
Yeah, for sure.
At the campground, at the fairgrounds.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just, all right, thank you. Okay, and then number E next is, that was just for information. Next is illegal options, previous employees, you have anything to report regarding that?
No.
At this juncture, no. Okay. All right. And then? No?
No, I'll take it from me on that.
Okay. But that was a comment made earlier tonight. Where are we with that? So anyway, we're leaving that on there for any updates. And then F is MSTU, and any additional information sought or found regarding MSTU and speaking with the sheriff. I have not been in touch with the sheriff regarding that. I do have two scheduled meetings, one with Chad Johnson, Representative Chad Johnson, within the next month. And then I also have an appointment with Senator McLean, with possibly legal representing also for that, for Senator McLean and just Archer's financial recovery and opportunities for, by exception, to consider things like what I spoke about, I think, once or twice, just in discussion with you all and, and opportunities is, by exception, the line of credit is, that we have with the mayor's bank is $828,000 and some change. We're paying interest only. We have $1.25 million in, in state legislation appropriations that were given, presented to us in spring. It's sitting there in a bucket of money. It's to be used for construction. It, it is beyond me, and maybe I think too much outside of the box, why that money in that bucket can sit right there when we have the 13 million and the ticket price to go to Newberry is relatively lower than that, but that's for construction. All of, most, all of the funds and used to take that line of credit up to 828 that I know of, and what we've referenced or whatever, is relative to wastewater or water enhancement projects. It's not like it was used for operations. My presentation to both representative and the senator is, by exception, is there any consideration to be able to utilize that to not have to be paying that 6.75% interest on the 828,000 and use those funds that were used for wastewater projects? I.e., one example is $268,000 was paid to our friends at Kimley and Horn to get them reduced down in their wastewater bill to what we've gotten it down to. We used, utilized the line of credit on that. So just opportunities with that, and I have those two meetings, so. All right, next is new business, agenda item one, resolution number 2025-32, approving the local government comprehensive planning services agreement with our friends at North Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Just Donnie, you want to, yes, ma'am?
So this is approval of the same contract that has been in years past, no price increase. I do, I do hesitate to, to read it until we have the other commissioner back on the dais.
Okay, yeah. Don't have a quorum that we do.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yeah, yes, sir, if I can answer. If not, you can hold me to it.
Just sticking with the old business there, you mentioned Kimley Horn. Did we ever get that? And I know you're not the previous attorney, but did we ever get that resolved and paid? And I think the last we left off and talked about it, it was still in legal and there was maybe $5,000 owed, or they wanted more money? Or can you talk about that, Deanna?
Did we have a lingering, I thought it was 28,000 was the lingering balance with Kimley Horn, dear?
Ms. Folds, do you know if I'm able to discuss that?
Or is it still in litigation?
I don't know the answer, so I would say please do not.
Okay, fair enough. I, I just didn't know if we had finally resolved that yet.
It's still in litigation. They have not come to an agreement, but a Trump peacemaking thing, they have not come to that.
Okay, it's just another month has gone by since we, and probably next month, if I can remember, I'll ask that question again.
If you, I think you were at the last meeting when it was, Mr. Walker discussed, that we were ramping up Witter and Curran to get to that point of review, so that we don't lose any of those timelines with this Phase One project. So that's going in sync as we try to finish this litigation. I think I could speak to that, because that's fairness.
And it's been two or three months, but I remember when the young lady from Kimley Horn was here and she was talking about finishing the plans and having the timeline.
Try to expedite it and all that, yeah, when we got excited.
Because there was certain, there was a window of time that you had to hit on, on these markers. But other than that, the IRS, did we ever hear back? Were they able to waive the fees as a courtesy and, and do anything for us?
No, we have not heard back from them.
Just haven't heard back, but we don't know if that's ship sailed or anything.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we have a quorum. Yes, ma'am?
Proceed with reading by title only, resolution number 2025-32. A resolution of the city of Archer, Florida, approving the local government comprehensive planning services agreement between the city of Archer and the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, authorizing the appropriate city staff and officials to execute the agreement, providing that the city of Archer will accept the responsibilities outlined in the attached agreement, repealing all resolutions in conflict and establishing an effective date. And again, this contract is in line with what was previously approved for the prior fiscal year.
Yeah, we entertain a motion for consideration. This is our current annual contract we have with North Central Florida Regional Planning Council. And a motion from Commissioner Penny, the second from Commissioner Green. Any other comments or questions regarding this annual contract that we hold with them with no increase? Hearing none, anyone from the constituency in the audience regarding questions about this annual contract we have with North Central Florida Regional Planning Council as our master planners, when we need to have them review any comp plan amendments or any dialogue about anything regarding that. They've provided our vision workshops before they do those kind of things gratuitously within the contract. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of resolution number 2025-32 as presented in red, say aye.
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 Aye as well, nays like sign, hearing none, motion carries three, zero. Item three, Archer Legislative Agenda. Yes, ma'am?
Mike New was gonna, from Witter and Curran, was gonna-
Let's get one. Volunteer code enforcement. Let's get one.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I did, I'm sorry. This discussion item, I'm sorry, I'm Adam Administrator. Item two was volunteer code enforcement discussion and opportunity to utilize, again, another source of volunteering from our citizenry. Do you want to comment on that, Deanna, or we just, you want to hear our recommendations or?
Yes, I mean, I talked to the attorneys earlier about it, so just to see if you guys were interested and then if legal wanted to add anything to that, just otherwise, I just don't, we don't have time to get to it at the moment, but codes definitely need to be done desperately throughout the whole city.
And you wear that cap of administrator, that then drives the magistrate and what the magistrate to do is our process at this point. So basically, we would be, just walk and talk here. So basically, we would be seeking volunteers that might see code infractions. You would review them and they could assist with clerical things like courtesy letters and things like that to identify and actually-
Correct, yes.
And even go out and post and things like that, take the photos-
Take, yes, that's-
On public property of the violation.
Right, yeah, on public, on private, on public property, yes. Take the pictures with the address and-
To set up the file, then drive the courtesy letter with the, the standard timeframe. And the volunteer source would do that based on their observations as well as any complaints that may come to you for them. And that would be their volunteer function.
Correct, yes, sir.
Utilizing a camera, a city-owned camera to-
Correct.
What do y'all think about? Another freebie.
I heard you say public property, that, does that include private properties? Private, you know, I mean-
That have to be on right of ways.
Yeah, they have to be right, but they, they have that understanding that they can't go on anybody's private property.
I would recommend that the mag, they meet with the magistrate.
I was just saying, can people just go on?
No, no, they, when I said public, I meant they have to stay on the public right-of-way sidewalk or whatever to take whatever, they cannot enter on private property. And my only other recommendation to speaking to it, I, I think, you know, even my expense, whatever the hourly rate of the magistrate is, but he needs to meet with them and do a workshop if we get that group of interested parties, so they have some basis of the function, the liability, litigation or whatever, what, and his legal recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, we, we did speak with Deanna earlier about that that was a, a great idea that was brought up, of some kind of training workshop, an eligibility application and a swearing in to uphold the law. So several things that would go into it, but if, if y'all are wanting to move forward with that, there's, then we can go ahead and get working on those kinds of things.
What about being insured or bonded? Not necessarily, not handling money, would be just records and things like that, so what they need?
Maybe a liability waiver would be in the application that if, so-
And a confidentiality, confidentiality agreement, because it could go quasi judicial and they can't be talking around town about what's coming before the magistrate and things like that.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm playing legal, but that part of it-
There's a lot of things to consider, yes.
Part of the workshop exercise that they would vet, be vetted and, and still interested in that, so.
Yes, and if they were the people that were taking pictures, they'd need to understand they would need to come before the magistrate to testify that this is a true and accurate depiction of the photo that I took. So that would, it would require-
Almost like a function of the codes board, the volunteer codes board, except they're not the judges, they're the assistant clerical people that go out and do the functions.
Would there be any type of liability on the city with having volunteer, volunteers to do this?
I think that's, that's one of the things we'd have to look into of what, what does the person sign, what do they undertake as a volunteer if they're going out on public property? What, what's their responsibilities and what are they not allowed to do?
What are their limits?
What are the limits? So that would, that would be something that would all be looked at before this would actually be implemented.
So that if we did, I mean, if, is, is it an option for them to assume full liability on themselves? Would that be an option?
I'd have to look into that. I mean, I don't think, no. They're, they're performing a function for the city, even on a volunteer basis, it's still associated with the city.
It's a blanket liability under our insurance.
We'd have to, all that would be covered in the training and the, maybe there's a handbook that they get, all of that would, but if it's not something that the commission's willing to entertain, then we won't go down that road of developing the, the forms and what the limits and requirements would be. But if it is something that we'd like a standard thing, we can bring more information.
Is that going to be an extra charge for us from you guys?
No.
Oh, okay.
Not, not considered a special project, right?
And it just expedites the ability for them to emphasize financial recovery exercises like reconciliations and those kind of functions, taking a little bit off or until we get the placement of the part-time city manager in place. Because once we got that person, then that person can take on that role again, because that, that's who the administrator is or was, and that's why you got that cap right now. Tag, tag, you're it. So we had discussion, do we want to proceed? If it is, I need a motion to proceed with that, opening that up. And do you have any volunteers now that have come forward and said they'd be interested or no? I mean, with the different times.
I just talked about Lori, to, to Lori Costello, but she's the only one.
That was the last conversation, that's been months ago, when she was going to gather up people that would be interested in helping or whatever. But you could open it up to posting as a volunteer for those that might want to be interested in helping with that, and then set up the workshop as a first step. Do we want to entertain a motion?
I don't know about that one. I mean, it would be good, but I just, it's-
The other, the, I mean, and I'm just putting our things in timeline practice.
Yeah, I understand.
The other opportunity is if, if we agree with the, I don't know if y'all did the homework.
We'll just, we'll just be voting just for them to look into it, I guess, tonight.
Correct, not, not that whatever we put together, there needs to be an approval. It's just, yes, I like the idea, bring us some more information of what this would look like.
Okay.
And, and in that same light, we have, if we have expedited our job description for a part-time city manager and finished it, get it to Deanna to crop into one form, send it to legal, so that we can quickly get that posted, because I have, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to sue authority, but I have reached out to our, our regional league of directors. She's on vacation, she's in New York, but I just said we're about to post a finished part-time job description. If you have any retired or semi-retired contacts with the League of Cities, because we did, we wanted to avoid ICMA, please, and she was very receptive, and that's Miss Diana Davis from Waldo. Her husband is the mayor, but she acts as executive director. She was already starting a network, so we just can't consider anybody until we post it. So if y'all are finished with your job description or what the last, I'd just like Deanna to be able to send it to legal and have their final review. And Dallas Lee had the, the initial paragraph he wanted with the emphasizing financial accounting background or whatever, and I created something and sent it to her just emphasizing that, but we need to get that done so that we can get it to legal and you guys say it looks good.
So, so what, what does the motion need to say?
Motion for the city manager and legal to bring back more information at the next meeting about this and motion to add it to the agenda.
Does it have to wait till the next meeting? If it has your review and you can send it back to city, because you all are finished with it, she could send it to us, show us that, and then it go to legal? Does it?
We can-
Because it's the same job description, it's just been reduced to a part-time position. That was the, that was the critical thing. It was all in a full-time composite.
It was about two different things, wasn't it?
It was about the code enforcement thing.
She was talking about codes.
Right.
And then-
So we want to just proceed with that, but not expedite getting the whole workshop and all that at this point.
I don't know that we need a motion for all of that, just, do you want us to expend the time on it? We, we will do that.
When we're ready.
As far as the posting of the position, yeah, that, that's, that's separate and we don't need to wait for the next meeting for that.
I just, I just want y'all to see it from a legal scrivener standpoint, say, all right, it's got all the components of it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we, we put, we've interjected all of our, all of our feedback, she just needs to get it outlined, sent to you.
Sent to us and then we'll prove-
That's what I thought was going to happen.
Okay, great.
And we don't need to wait another month, because we've been doing this for a month now. Well, Archer does best and go backwards with the training, so, all right.
Understood.
All right, well, that's good. I'm sorry to add that one, but I just was very concerned that you guys did get a chance to look at the job description.
Right, no, I sent my-
Okay, thank you all. Well, I called it homework. All right. Archer Legislative Agenda, she was going to speak to us about Mike New, I think, when we had to stop and go back, so I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Soon as she gets back, she can share with us. I think that's Deanna, unless it's, do you know about that?
I don't have any information on that agenda item, though.
I haven't been apprised of anything, so that's got to-
Did you know bond from the code enforcement thing?
Ma'am?
Did you know bond from the code enforcement?
Yes, ma'am, we, we want to proceed with that, but not with an expedited timeline of when to do a workshop and all that at this juncture.
Ask for comments at all?
It was just a discussion, but certainly come forward with any discussion regarding that. Our biggest concern seemed to be the liability and the educational piece, so that volunteers will feel comfortable.
I just have one comment. Having lived in a small town, yes, it was up north, where they did a volunteer code enforcement officer at one point, in the end, it worked very well, but when they first started it, the person who volunteered to do it was the best Barney Fife you've ever seen. Within six months, he had everybody cutting their grass, painting their houses and grumbling like you wouldn't believe.
Content your spirit, huh?
Yeah, the spirit was, was there, there wasn't any question of it, but it was because nobody really had the oversight over the person, and I'm not sure who this person or persons will be answering to.
The volunteer group would answer to them.
But somebody needs to make sure that they know that it's, it's the spirit of what they're doing, yes, but it doesn't mean that you have to-
Have their limits, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. 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 And so if you're gonna be looking at this and putting it together, you might wanna consider that at the same time.
And that would be part of the workshop, I would think, where they know the, the resources to go to. If somebody's just, you know, gonna shoot them with a shotgun because they're actually taking a picture. I mean, cause these kinda things happened seventeen years as a volunteer codes board member. I never got the shotgun shot at me. But that administrator and staff used to assist with just taking the photos and things. And this is seventeen years ago when I first started. It got contentious. I mean, when they come into the chambers then, even though we were the quasi judicial judges.
Well, and not only that, but if somebody walks up to your house and starts taking pictures, you're gonna start asking why.
My, my house got broken windows for the first three years. And it's, all I was doing was acting as a volunteer. And my wife's grandmother, who, that's her home we lived in, she says, you're gonna get us all killed. So, cause I was volunteering at Archer.
But I just wanted to bring that.
That's that Barney Fife idea. And it wasn't us doing that at all. We were just applying the ordinances. But most of the time, Ms. Skinner, when you explained the purpose and, and the ordinance that it applied to in common language, there's a lot of time, you know, removal of oeful. You tell a common person what oeful is, you know, you, you have to define that within our ordinance, you know. If you do it in a receptive way, and then you show due diligence and what's the cost to the city to reduce the fine, they begin to get it. And, and they get it when you say, now, if you repeat this violation, I mean, things that are in, in our toolbox, like the fines will double if you get a repeat of your lawn. And you tell them in advance, they begin to see, God, this person's trying to help me not take me to the boar house. It works. But they've gotta be trained to that effect. I mean, we just had a good board, you know, not cause I was on it, there was Joni and myself, and we stayed on it many years. Ninety-eight percent compliance through courtesy letters. And it got taken care of before we got into fines, you know. So, thank you for that feedback. Anyone else regarding just this idea of volunteer codes board, citizenry involvement? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I think the training's a really good thing, but I have to tell you, if the attorney comes back and tells you that they have to sign a waiver of liability, this thing is DOA. Cause, cause no, no prudent person will do that. I mean, my personal opinion is if they're acting as an agent of the city, they should be covered.
On the general.
But if, but if you guys have to ask him for a waiver of liability, don't bother.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you. I agree.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Stefano?
Yes, hi, Charles Stefano. Yeah, it's a great idea, but I think that, yeah, liability, I would probably believe, yeah, no. I will say this, after having the pleasure of experiencing our code violation process, it's a big job.
To do the due diligence, yeah, in this step process.
Yeah, I've been through it, took, took over a year and a half. And I'll be honest with you.
Yours were the roosters, weren't they?
It was.
It was.
It was.
Rooster, it was only one, wasn't it? It was one?
No, actually, it was several.
Several, okay.
Yeah. But the point being, you know, if you look at our codes, one, you have to decipher them. And I'll be honest, I thought at the time when Tony was doing the job as city manager with all our projects, I don't think he, you know, whatever Tony did or didn't do, I think for one person to manage all the projects we had going on at the time.
It was unfair.
And code enforcement.
That was way down the list.
It actually is almost like a full-time job. As you drive around the Archer, city of Archer neighborhoods, there could be a lot of improvement.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it's a big job.
In our organization here, just in staffing, again, just, I'm reflecting on two thousand ten to probably two thousand sixteen, there was a manager and an assistant manager, city manager. The assistant city manager was the administrator, the code enforcement.
It's a big.
Who was presenting all that. The administrator, the city administrator would review his work, his or her work. But that was the administrator. We don't, we don't have that now. We have the deputy clerk. So even if we had the full staffing, so.
Big job.
Good point. Oh, thank you. I agree. To do it fairly and, you know, and expeditiously because of the volume of work. I hope she didn't die on us. Let me go check.
Did you wanna speak anything on Archer Legislative?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, cause I, I don't have any here. I'm sorry. Just to apprise you, we just, on the, I interjected the job description, just in where we're at. They're all through with it. So whatever you have, and again, just asking you if you could just get that in one format, send it to Legal, Legal will send it back to you and then we can post. And I just, I shared with, what I shared with you, with them, that I had just reached out to our executive director of the league in our region, and she said she had contacts, but would, as soon as we posted it, she would send those. And then now we're under Archer Legislative Agenda, item three, just whatever you wanted to approach. Just that was the Mike New. You said Mike New.
Yeah, with, yeah, with Warden Kern was gonna send me some information. He just didn't have time to get to that. But what he, I don't know, go. What it was is since legislative update, of course, was coming up, but there's a meeting on October twentieth. I don't know the time, Commissioner, but, right, but I know, I'm pretty sure you would probably wanna go, Mayor Hope. I forgot where it was now, but it's the local legislative delegate. So he just wanted me to, you know, reach out and see if we had one or two projects we were interested in submitting for the legislative update. He said it's usually like between five and seven thousand dollars, excuse me, five hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand. I mean, it can be more, but he said that's normally what the projects look like. It's not like immediate thing we need to do.
But it's just range of those.
But if you guys could kinda think of.
For legislative appropriations, for the, for the winter session coming up in January?
Correct. Yes, sir. So if you guys can think about any, you know, projects you wanna put on the legislative agenda.
That's the money.
So you have to stay it right at the moment, but if you wanna send them.
October twentieth is next week away.
Well, I believe that meeting's for, yes, you would wanna go pitch it. Didn't you go to one? Why am I thinking of?
Last year. Last year I did. And it was, it was the two and a half million, and we got one point two five million out of it. So.
Right.
I mean, that was the beginning of the two point five. And I spoke to it and.
Right.
I think Joni went with me.
But there's something about it, it's not urgent, or, but I, I'll get more information from Mr. New about it. But he just put, wanted to get it on the radar, but.
Thank you, ladies.
On the radar about the, you know, the meeting upcoming and if everybody wants to go.
Yeah, I don't know what kinda price tag to put on it this late in the game, but I mean, I, I'm just speaking, just, it's a discussion. The splash pad and whatever that requires to, for revamp and, you know, prevention or whatever, I'm not saying it's gonna be five hundred thousand or whatever, but that splash pad seems to be quite expensive. And, and it, it's a missing link in our recreation and park facility opportunity right now. And then we have not addressed any of the park standard being the same on both parks. And so in generality, if we talked about that, and even the lighting, not that, I mean, that's real expensive, but.
We got a lot of dead, a lot of dead tree limbs hanging over that basketball.
But repaired fencing and that kinda stuff. Even if I had a ballpark from Calvin and then, replacement of fencing in parks. But whatever sta, I mean, we, you know, I think Calvin could give an estimate of what would it take for that standard for that ballpark diamond and all that to be the same standard as Wilson Robinson Park. And we, you know, I don't have anything to present it this October twentieth, but it'd get a price tag on it. Park upgrade and renovation for, for baseball programs in the future and then the splash pad, that could encompass several hundred thousand dollars in fencing.
We asked.
And again, I'm not a contractor. That's my famous chirping cricket line tonight. I'm not a contractor, but. I don't know if y'all have anything else that's top of your head, but.
I didn't know if they do the thing about the dead tree limbs hanging over that basketball court.
At, at Green Court? Yeah. You know, just park upgrades and name the parks.
Even though there are yard nets to it, but they're hanging.
Tree trimming, yeah, and name Green Courts, Wilson Robinson Park.
Pauling too.
And even tree removal. I mean, if some of the fence damages from the decaying trees, I'm thinking Wilson Robinson more than Maddox Park, it, it could encompass and give Calvin, tell Calvin to give us a thirty thousand shot level with those things in mind. It would give us at least a bullet to present. All relative to park upgrades for, you know, preparing for recreation programs twenty-five, twenty-six, or.
And look, I don't know if they cover vehicles or anything like that, but I tell you, I think I've said before, I rode in one of those trucks. I actually rode in both of them. I didn't realize I had rode in both of them. They are extremely dangerous. I highly recommend, I know we don't have the funds, but I would not recommend they drive those unless it's the only option.
Except the, the one new one we have, the newer one.
Correct. And that's why that one does use so much gas. I know.
And so if there's a utility truck, need to work with that.
And then the little side-by-side thing. But I'm just like, you know, I rode in both of them and the one kinda recently, and it was scary. And I don't think our employees should be in that kinda danger with vehicles.
It's, it's a wish list to go forward with the first meeting of, of January appropriations, so. Okay.
Thank you.
And, and put a, a replacement of the stop sign that got, that's the county though, isn't it? The county's gonna replace that stop sign that got crushed and cut in half right there.
No, we will.
Oh.
Yeah.
And we're gonna expense that, too?
Right now, I believe the county's been doing in-kind signs, and then we'll find out Wednesday if they're gonna do the in-kind cold patch.
Okay, our guys can install it, but they get the sign.
Oh, yeah, they just go get them from the county.
That's good. Cause I mean, that was an expensive.
Yes.
Fancy one. Okay. Alright. Do you know what time and where that is, or you can find out for, or I just asked Mike New? I call Mike New or something?
If you wanna call Mike, you can, sure.
Okay. Alright, I'll do that as a homework assignment. Unless one of you all can go. It doesn't have to be me, I mean, just to go and present.
I don't have. Because you're better at it.
Oh, I put my bird, put my crown on. Oh, you got a bird, you can get me a whopping, every day, every picture, and I'll wear the crown. Alright, okay. Then if that's okay, acceptable. Thank you, Mr. Stefano. I'll, I'll reach out to Mike New and find out where and, and then.
You have a lieutenant, so where you have to go?
No, it's usually right here. It's in Alachua County delegation, isn't it? It's the Alachua County delegation, like it was at Santa Fe last year.
Yes, sir. Yes, yes.
At one of their auditoriums.
I've come to you.
And there were two hundred people there.
I've come for more support.
But everybody was coming.
Together?
Like, like in Oliver Moore, sir.
Oh, okay. What time is it?
It usually start, last year it was one o'clock, it started on the, on the nose and ended at five o'clock. I think Mr. Lewandowski attended that last year. This is the same thing. The, the legislation appropriations, whatever it was at Santa Fe, yeah. This is that time of year. I forgot that it was in October, November last year, so.
It's on the twenty.
It was like, uh, this is in St. Kirk, and it's like this.
It's on Monday.
It was January, February, wasn't it? For this, this one's in October, I guess for the January session starting. So, but it'd probably be at Santa Fe, I'm, I'm guessing until I reach out to Mike New. But as soon as I find out, I'll let you know, Deanna, and then you can share with my colleagues up here if they want to attend or whatever. Sit there with a burger king, go around and laugh. Alright. Reports, correspondence, communication? Nothing? City managers report? I think we have it. Any questions regarding that?
The only thing I think I wanted to ask for recommendation is, did you wanna still move forward with the TV or not?
With the five hundred dollar expense.
Yeah, cause when I talked to Emerald Data, though, cause of course they'll need to do a host support to, so they'll put the support and the TV on the wall.
Pretty easy for them to do. We don't have a contract outside of our current IT.
Oh, no. Emerald Data will handle all of it. We just buy the TV and they'll do everything.
We need a motion to consider, but I mean, we were gonna consider it. It was five hundred dollars for the big screen.
I've heard anybody say they need it. Some people made, made a suggestion, but.
That was, right, when we stopped doing agenda copies, cause people can't see that little bitty TV.
If we had big presentations or, or guests with presentation.
Well, yeah, if a guest come, maybe it may be.
With presentation, something like wastewater or that.
Is that something we can afford?
Is that, or we, here's that old business, we could table it to a month. Then, just for her record, if you wanna hold it till January and have it reviewed again, see where we're at?
Do that.
For the scale of economics and recovery. Okay, so just add it to our old list with January agenda to review again, not to, okay? But I mean, I, I, I think we need it when we have a presentation. We don't until when we do. And then we look around, what are we doing now? We're making a hundred dollars for the copies, you know, for some. Okay. And then if, if those haven't seen it, our insurance company with the claim, yeah, I, I think you should be proud of that. We did, we did put in a claim regarding the misappropriated embezzlement from a former employee. And it was a five hundred dollar deductible on fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. It was embezzled, and it's been returned minus the five hundred dollars into our bank account. And I don't wanna speak legally out of term, but there's still the restitution responsibility once this proceeds through the process. So almost full recovery for that. And it was with the old insurance company. Cause normally if you put in a claim, you know what happens with insurance, you get dropped like a hot potato. And all due respect to that other company, cause they did wanna to have us returned to them, FMIT did. Then they, then they offered to reduce, but we're with the, the new company partners. So, I mean, it did not affect our relationship with the reduced new vendor contractor, the partner. So win-win on that one. Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Attorney report? Anything for the sake of legal?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Commission reports? Commissioner Kathy Penny, what have you been doing, Miss Paparazzi? She's our, she's our camera lady. She, she catches you, catches you in the act.
So one thing I did go to is a meeting at the, oh, is a meeting with Alachua County and the city. Cause I did discuss the MV before, cause they're trying to cut some of the services, like in Archer House Friends, La Crosse. Mm-hmm. So they're still going back and forth. So I did go to a meeting with Mary Alfred and Tina Sirdon in reference to that, but I messed up. I parked and paid for my parking, which was for two hours. And when they started discussing good, that was my two hours. So I did listen to the rest of it online, and they are gonna be having more meetings in reference to it because it is a lot of money involved. They're saying in the beginning, they were, and I think it's in five-year implements, that they were paying like a hundred and five hundred thousand for this service. But now a triple starting in March. So from March to October is the hardest part. And hopefully they'll get it fixed by then. They have more meetings and to see what we can do because they don't want, there are some other services out there, but you wanna make sure the residents or your family member get the right service. Because in the beginning, they were saying there were some people that go pick them up, but wouldn't come back and pick them up to take them back home. So you wanna make sure that the companies are reliable. And MV has been around for like twenty-two years. So hopefully they work out everything. And I told them I wanna be involved with the, the rest of the meetings. And also I had a meeting with the opioid trend task force. And like I said earlier, if you go on I-75, it's some videos on YouTube also in reference to it. Because like I was saying earlier, Alachua County is still in the top. I don't think we're number three anymore, but we still like in the top five. So it is important that we have recreation and things for our kids, the splash paddles, whatever services we can go ahead and put together because we gotta keep our kids active. And also I did go by the Methodist Church on Saturday. And also Sunday evening, we went to the blessing of the badge for, for like the police office firefighters and all of that. They had that at Abiding Faith. So I went by there where, you know, to let them know that we are, you know, we for you.
Appreciate that.
And to stand by them. And that was a, a good service, a good thing they had. Chad Scott was there. They had a phenomenal speaker from down south. She was very good. So that's what I done.
Commissioner Green.
Oh, nothing.
Anything for the good of the country.
Oh, nothing. But I, I think last time I reported that, about my mailbox in Holly Hills.
That is a success story.
And I want you all to know that we are getting service now. Yes. So I'm able to walk out with service we've never had before in the Holly Hills neighborhood.
Thirty years in the making.
Yes, yes. So I'm so happy, so happy for that. I, I did wanna throw out one question. This is not a comment, but I wanna throw out one question. And I was hoping Mr. Stefano would still be here. But when we're having, when we're having people that wanna volunteer in the office, you know, seeing everybody else's accounts and stuff like that, what, is there any type of?
Confidentiality agreement.
Yeah, confidentiality and, and. What, is there any type of, um, yeah, confidentiality and, and, uh, uh, I know Mr. Stefano is, you know, a good person, I'm not... But I think when you have, when, when you have like one citizen that would like to do something like that, and then if you get somebody walking up the street wanna do something like that. So my question is, what do we need to have in place for, for volunteers as far as coming in like that?
In terms of, I mean, a, a lot of the records are subject to sunshine law, so they're open. But I think somebody brought up the comment about individuals' addresses, th- things like that. I would think that it would be similar to whatever kind of confidentiality an employee is subject to. Be the same kind of agreement they would have to sign that they understand this, okay?
Okay, yeah, 'cause I was just wondering about that, and, um, do, do we have to do background checks or anything for that? 'Cause I'm just wondering, because I'm, I'm just thinking when you let in one citizen, if they have somebody else that wants to do it, you can't turn them down. Which we welcome, with, right, right, I'm thinking that we'll have to set a standard, which, which, I welcome his, um...
Volunteer.
Service, you know, that he wants to provide for us, but I'm just thinking that, do we need to have some stipulations or something in place? You know, when someone else wanna come along and do the same thing, can we just open that up to everybody, or what do we do?
No, it does not have to be open to everybody, that was something that Deanna and I talked about earlier, of setting some eligibility requirements. There's no minimum or maximum of what that could look like, but it would apply to everyone equally, um, but we will only accept volunteers that meet A, B, C, D, and E. Whatever that may be, and that's part of...
For whatever thing they're volunteering.
Exactly.
And have a job description basically with the box. And Ms. Skinner was talking about, so you don't have a Barney Fife with good intentions, but the whole town isn't affordable or whatever, so.
And, and those requirements would be subject to your vote and approval.
With that workshop and all that, they would clearly know what the limits were. Okay.
Because we, we, we've been accused of...
And people post it.
So we, we, you know, so I just, I just think we just have to be careful.
No, I think that's a very...
But again, I welcome his, uh, Mr. Stefano's, um, whatever he wants to contribute, time, dedication. But I just know that being a business and being like we are, that we have to have some stipulations in place. So that anybody just can't come in and say, I wanna volunteer for this and that, so.
Right.
Anything else for the good of the country? Okay, and so I'm jumping back, and, 'cause it could be you, or it could be you regarding op- the opioid, opioid recovery and that task force and the funding. That email, that email that said, where do you want your funds to go? How did we answer that?
I don't know, I haven't seen the email.
What, what, I mean, could you just educate me? I know that there are funds that we receive from that project, but when do we get those? How much is it?
I actually don't know all those answers, when I received that to sign that, I had sent it to the attorneys, and I don't think they've had time to look at it. Because they keep sending me documents to sign for...
Opioid Task Force, County Funding.
I haven't signed anything yet.
And, and it was just a request, you forwarded it to them, to somebody, Mr. Walker or somebody?
Yes, I did. Yes, I'll, I'll check with Scott on that.
Where do you want your funds sent? And you know us and finding out your recovery is like city march.
I'm, I'm familiar with the task force, um, through our work with other cities, so yeah, I'll check on that with Scott.
Okay, do you remember getting that in the years past or anything, or the funding?
No, but she sent me the paperwork that Mr. Hammond signed in the past.
Oh, okay, 'cause I just don't remember.
But something about we were wanting to, to, what do they, they call them something strange, donate it to...
To somebody else.
To somebody else, but I don't think we wanna do that right now, but, I mean...
I'm not trying to be greedy, but I am, it's like, no, we need to keep it in our own coffers, and if you have to have a special account to put it in, so it's tracked, that's fine, but... I mean, I don't know, it could be five hundred dollars, it could be five billion, I just don't wanna lose the opportunity. 'Cause it sounds like if we don't act on it, probably by a certain time, that it, it revolves back into the county funding or something instead of coming home. Your next meeting, you asked about that.
I would...
And take a picture, whoever you're talking to.
Let me tell you, when I was on a Zoom meeting, I was also up there with Ms. Lopez and the guy getting the quote. And so trying to double duty and...
Yeah, my apologies for that being so lengthy, I just wanna make sure we were following our, our protocol. You mentioned it, Madam Attorney. And certainly be fair, and had not put too much as a project manager on Ms. Lopez, when I know she has so, and she didn't mention it, she has so many projects, so. Myself, I attended, um, as our representative for the North Central Florida Planning Council. I'm no longer the chair, um, it's revolved now, our county commissioner, Mary Alfred, is the new chair, which is still good in our backyard, 'cause she lives in Archer, so. Um, we have her, I think her personal support more than we've had other county commissioners in the past and that light. Um, I did that in, at the end of September, October first was a, a very strong training day for me. That was that, I think y'all might have gotten it too, the invitation for the planning officials' training with American Planning Association, the Florida chapter was all day long. I reminded Mr. Lewandowski at the last twenty-third hour, I'm sorry, Mr. Lewandowski, it was closed, but I have a notebook that I've started to build. It was a tremendous amount of information, uh, relative to our knowledge base, unless we do all of the searching and researching. But a lot of links of which I'm gonna kill the tree and waste the paper, but create a notebook with the information I received. 'Cause that went from eight o'clock to five o'clock on October first with a, I think it was a thirty-minute lunch or whatever, we're two fifteen-minute breaks. But it, it, it was very good, strong speakers and, and a lot of very, very valuable information. And I have a couple of business cards for planning resource consultants, which, you know, that costs money, that's all, um, but... Very strong on comp plan, envisioning all the elements of comp plans, the SB one eighty spent an hour almost on that and with two different speakers. About zoning, zoning changes, process that you go through that exactly to meet with success. Whole hour on implementing comprehensive planning techniques. And then how to engage the public, um, as a resource, not as an advocate, or, I mean, an adversary, treat them, you know, as an advocate, um, so, very good practices. And then there were three pages of frequently used acronyms for planning alone for the state of Florida. So that, I thought, that is cool, 'cause I've seen, I've seen multiples of these acronyms, and I go, what acronym is that from? So, just in, in, just glossary terms and things like that. So I'll create the notebook and then just make it available here in the office or whatever for us, and Mr. Lewandowski, you might wanna take it and check it out or whatever, bring it back or whatever, just reference the links. You're a link guy, so, um, but I, I like to copy it just so that I'll have to reference it back and forth. But attended that, it's very, very, uh, resourceful for me, and, and it was with our, it was in Newberry, hosted by Newberry. Newberry is the second highest growing municipality in the state of Florida at this point, seven percent growth. But I remind us, they also have commissioners that go to every meeting, or, I'm sorry, I can't speak in terms of that. At least two of the meetings that I've attended where they're screaming for the LDR review team to get caught up with their comp plan and LDR reviews and amendments to the neigh- neighborhood developments and things like that. But specifically, one commissioner keeps talking about the sidewalks don't have, they're built in the, in the subdivisions. But there's such a short range of driveway per house to the sidewalk. The second car, and sometimes even the first car, if it's a big truck, blocks the sidewalk. So you've got that ADA issue, the, the younger generation with their, their child's, you know, carts and stuff that are out in the street. Going in and out of, on the, on those neighborhood streets, not that the streets are that busy, but the streets themselves are very narrow. So then you have somebody parking, it's, it's probably, I don't know if they've had incidents or not, but they're trying to get that adjusted. So it's proper dashboard planning for that perspective, especially with their growth. Um, because they've gone from population five thousand to, I think they're over eight thousand people right now. And, yeah, in like two and a half years? I don't know the exact statistic, but exponential growth and, and development. So they're on the ra- I mean, they're successfully on the radar, and a little boastful about it and why they're doing things like the charter school plan and all that kinda stuff. Okay, last but not least is our second public comment period for those constituents, anybody in the audience would like to speak to anything? For our notes to be taken, to try to review and...
Lewandowski, so, um, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about, uh, Mrs. Lopez's proposal, and it needed some discussion. But I really wish you would spend time focusing on some of the other important things. Like, for example, I keep on beating you up over the financial stuff. I mean, I'm only asking for you to do what any prudent board of directors would do. That, that's all I'm asking for. You know, cash flow, uh, looking to see how much, you know, what the percentage budget spent. Those are not things that take four months to have done for last year's reconciliation. That's looking at the current stuff right now, so you can make decisions. Cleaning up the process for site plan approval. That's really important stuff, and you voted on something without a requirement to make sure that whoever's sitting in the seat over here, and she won't be sitting here, 'cause unless she's going to be quitting and going back in part-time, you're not gonna do that, right? You're not gonna go part-time, are you? So, so you're not gonna have that job in the future, you know, that person's sitting there, that, you know, needs to have that level of direction, and you don't have it in your, in your charter. I don't know if you're ever gonna get a new charter, that's a whole nother question. But, you know, focusing on these things are really, really important, and, and we're not doing it. Uh, another thing is, it's been over a year now since we had the last, um, city manager go away. And, you know, I was sitting here last January when the auditor stood up here and said, there's potential fraud. I mean, I went back and replayed it just to make sure I understood it. So, nothing has happened with that, as far as I know.
I'm sorry, could, just, would you add that to the old business, because that was a homework assignment, sorry to interrupt you. But legal, Mr. Walker was gonna come back and have a whole, um, discussion about our options and what direction and the cost outlays, if there were, or liabilities or whatever. And we did not do, finish that homework assignment, so would you put that on old business and, and just apprise Mr. Walker that that's something that we need to do?
So, so if, if you, if you look at the comments I've made, you know, I focus on process, I focus on...
You're our planner.
Priorities, I'm a, I'm a planner.
You're a planner.
I don't wanna see the city go back into what we saw last year.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I don't want that to happen, and if you put these things in place, you can stop that from happening.
Yes, sir.
And I get a little frustrated when I read the paper and I see all these other communities where they've had problems with city managers and all other personnel. And the next thing I see is that there's indictments.
Yes, sir.
Not us, nothing happens, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate that passion, anyone else? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Roberson, thank you for your patience.
Of course, Rhonda Roberson, just wanna comment that I am still in favor of a five-day work week, think you could get a whole lot more done.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe even less overtime.
Okay, and just looking at Ms. Roberson and knowing this, under old business, uh, would you, and again, sorry, not trying to pinpoint you, Ms. Roberson. Would you put in old business, um, for our next meeting, review and beyond discussion, just action, the, um... Maintenance of the Lowell Cemetery asset and our maintenance contract for mowing and taking care of. 'Cause we need to go beyond this, I mean, we can start with discussion, but we need to take an action. I know we decided that we'd let staff do it, but if our public works director needs to be here and speak to it or whatever, I mean, have discussions with Calvin, but if you put that on there for old business. So that, we're, I mean, I, again, I'm not a contractor, I'm not a, a growing mowing guy, but right now it's the, the slowing down season of growing. So a month or two is not gonna see a big difference, but by the time we have all the leaves falling and then the weeds growing, you know, by December, January, you know, Christmas, people will be concerned that it's not being taken care of. Right now, every month that we're not ha- 'cause we're not contracting with West, they've been notified?
No, they have not. I had talked to a few of you, and I'm, I guess I misunderstood, I thought we were gonna leave the, the five eighty-two, which is a little under seven thousand. Then hiring a whole employee just to handle that. But I know I talked to Commissioner Penny about, you know, some cemetery stuff just the other day.
That's even more reason if you would put that old agenda discussion and slash action.
Yes, I would.
Because I don't, you know, um, I've had Ms. Roberson speaking to it, I've had Ms. Skinner speaking to it last month, I think, if I, my memory. Um, and the pros and cons regarding it, I understand the opportunity, um, but whoever we use down there, they cannot be damaging stones. And we cannot be rushing our staff in such a way that they, I'm not saying they would, they would probably take more time than a contractor would to do it right, I do believe that. Um, but we want the consistency of it, 'cause this is where we, you know, take us back, this is where we got six years ago, when we just said it was somebody else's job, and it, it was, it was an abhorable mess. And that's when Tammy and team took it upon themselves and doing it gratuitously, and we said, this is not fair, but we made a decision that they need to be contracted. Okay. Anybody else? Oh, yes, or Mr., Mr.?
Me.
Me, Mr. B. Was?
So right now, the employees, all the employees work eight or ten hours a day. Four days a week.
They're on the four-day week.
Ten hours a day, four days a week. Now, if you did it five days, would that be eight hours or ten hours? So you didn't really gain anything if you say, I'm gonna do it four hours at ten hours a day, or five at eight hours? Time is still the same.
Right.
Okay, I'm just making sure I understood that.
That this savings was gonna be from the on-call and the Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and having to cover the bathrooms, and that's where we, I'm sorry, another old business, we need to make the lock decision on the bathrooms. Because that opening and closing the bathrooms and inspecting those is costly right now with the on-call labor staff. That's, that is required. So we said that, and we, we're gonna look into whether wild spaces, wild places could expense, they're expensive, there's eight, twelve locks, whatever, I can't remember how many. But it was upwards of forty thousand dollars, but if we could use the wild space, the wild places, because other municipalities, smaller municipalities are using automatic lock and open for the bathrooms.
Right, no, I mean, I understand about, you know, timetables and everything else. I know somebody that works from like four to four-thirty in the morning till whenever.
Yes, sir.
So I mean, I don't know who puts in that kinda time, but that person does.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Lewandowski.
Yeah, 'cause I had suggested if we do, like, it's split the employees too, from like Monday to Thursday, and then one work from like, um, Tuesday to Friday, where they can split it.
With a rotating schedule?
Yeah, you know, some of them work like Monday. And then that way you still have someone every day, but you, they still getting eight, ten hours, but one have, one having Monday off, the other one having Friday. And split it like that, and then that's someone every day like that. If we have enough employees, because if you have four, we, we should be able to do it, it's just a suggestion, that's what I suggested.
Supervising them that fifth day though. So you're probably gonna have someone supervising.
If there was a specific assignment is that one on and what they do on that day. I mean, it's kinda like you had that where you had just the one staff person, somebody else was off and they got called in, or what, I mean, even with your, your two on and one, then one, and he calls in somebody else. That's happened a couple times already, so, and certainly with the bathroom maintenance for the parks, so. Anyone else?
Mr. May, I just wanna commend Mrs. Tanner, probably one of our oldest citizens here, uh, in Archer, maybe they oldest. But sitting throughout our long meeting this evening, so we commend you and our daughter Sharon for bringing her.
Sounds so good to see her.
Is traffic slowed down over there, or you still have to pull your dog by the leash to get rid of the way?
Um, no, it hasn't slowed down.
It had, even with the speed bumps.
They've taken the sign, one of the signs gone down, and I threw some trash across the railroad sign, uh, railroad track, and the sign, somebody had thrown the sign across the railroad track.
The whole sign?
The whole sign, I brought it back, city came and put it, uh, back in the hole, then it went down again, and it got laid, got picked up when they were mowing and laid on the other side. I gave them a couple of weeks, I started to...
Is it during the day, or is it late night, or it's both?
I, I don't know.
Oh, I, I expect y'all to stay up at night, but, I mean, my stuff, it happens on my street, I'm sorry, Magnolia or one hundred and seventy, is usually on Saturday afternoons, Sunday afternoons, and then Saturday and Sunday nights.
We have certain people on where that speed hump is, they go up in the grass and come around, they...
And down, down by the railroad tracks, they just go all the way around it.
They just go around up in the trees, so of course they probably hit that side and stuff. But I just got my post hole in here and went and dug a hole and buried it myself.
Well, I'm sorry.
It's down a lot deeper than the other one, 'cause the other one's leaning.
Well, thank you for doing that, I appreciate that. And thank y'all for coming tonight, I appreciate it. We were on good behavior tonight. We were on good behavior tonight versus some others. Huh, Mr. Lewandowski? What, what would you give us tonight on a scale of one to five?
Of what?
Just behavior. Be nice, Mr. Lewandowski.
Don't be yelling at each other.
We spent too, too long on one agenda, for sure. I have my apologies.
Mayor Hope, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to read this host statement, number one, I don't feel good at all.
I'm sorry.
But this is my, um, response, if anyone would like, um, a copy of it, to the allegations that were made at the last meeting against myself and the administration process.
Okay.
It's basically just pull-
Go ahead. Would you like to read it?
I don't know if I can make it through, I'll try.
You want me to read it for you? I mean, I can be your scribe and read.
Would you? I just, I do not feel good at all.
Yeah, I mean, you have a right to disclose anything, just like any of us. I mean, I've not seen this, but it's the whole thing.
If anyone would like some, whatever you want to pick on the spine.
This is a public meeting statement prepared for public meeting record. Speaker is Deanna Altop, our interim city manager of the City of Archer. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to address recent public accusations against me and the city's administrative process. These accusations have been circulated publicly, repeated on social media and brought into this chamber, and I believe the pub, public deserves a factual response. There have been claims that I retaliated against a former employee and did not interfere in an altercation. These allegations are false, misleading, and not supported by any factual record, documentation, or policy review. Personal matter and facts for the record. The former employee in question was subject to the same policies, expectations, and professional standards as every other City of Archer employee. Over time, multiple violations of policy occurred, including repeated insubordination, refusal, refusal to follow directives on professional conduct and ultimately behavior that raised legitimate safety concerns. The city followed progressive discipline before taking final action. This was not sudden, not personal, and not retaliatory. The employee was given opportunities to correct their behavior. The process followed city policy and Florida law. Legal and HR council reviewed the decision before action. False claim of retaliation. There have been public statements claiming I retaliated against this former employee. That is incorrect. No employment decision was made for personal reasons. No disciplinary action occurred without documented cause. The employee filed no grievance or protected activity before the discipline. Under Florida and federal employment law, retaliation must be connected to a protected activity. No such activity occurred, which means there is no legal basis for retaliation claim, none. False claim regarding the altercation. There has also been a false accusation that I did not interfere in an altercation. I want to make this very clear for the record. The incident referenced did not involve me. It involved a commissioner and a city employee. I was not a participant in that exchange and at no time was I asked to intervene, nor did the commissioner involved request my assistance. Furthermore, it must be stated that it is not appropriate for commissioners to engage employees in confrontation directly. The city charter prohibits commissioners from directing or disciplining staff. All staff concerns must be handled through administration, not confrontation. That policy exists to prevent precisely this type of situation. Commissioners must be held to a higher standard of conduct, especially in front of city staff. Leadership requires restraint, respect for policy, and professionalism. This matter was handled through proper administrative channels. Any statement that I did not interfere with, even though I was allegedly expected to in that altercation, is false and unsupported. Professional responsibility and legal boundaries. I also need to state clearly, I am bound by law, policy, and ethics. That means I cannot publicly disclose confidential personnel details or argue employment matters in public. I will not violate Florida law, employee rights, or my responsibility as interim city manager by engaging in gossip or personal attacks. Some individuals are using misinformation and incomplete stories because they know I am legally limited in what I can say. But limitation does not mean wrongdoing. It means I am following the law. Facts do not become untrue because others choose to shout louder. Misuse of public meetings. Public meetings should be used to conduct city business, not to promote false narratives, settle personal scores, or attempt to discredit public officials through emotional accusations unsupported by fact. This chamber should never be used for personal retaliation or political theater. The people of Archer deserve better than that. My commitment to this city, I am here to do a job and I will continue doing it. I will enforce policy consistently. I will maintain accountability and order inside this government. I will protect the, this organization from misconduct and intimidation. I will always follow the law. I will not be intimidated by false accusations, online attacks, or pressure campaigns. I will continue to lead the city with integrity, transparency, and respect for the truth. Others may choose conflict, I choose progress. My focus remains on doing the work the people of Archer expect and deserve. Thank you, Deanna Altop, Interim City Manager, City of Archer.
Thank you so much for reading that.
Would you put this in your file as well as just for record of this meeting, if it was disclosed in the-
No comments, I just wanted to read my facts.
You're owed that in the same way we have for four. With that said?
I just want to point out, I just want to point out that there's no facts in here, just, there's no facts.
No.
Just, just want to point that out. And I also think, and I mentioned this earlier, in that you had, whether Ms. Altop agrees with it or not, Commissioner White, former Commissioner White, when she got up here, has a right as a citizen to make, to speak her mind, just as anybody on Facebook, and they all have a right to speak their mind.
Absolutely.
And if you don't like it, as a public official, then you need to get out of this kitchen. That's just the way it is.
Yes, sir.
And I really think that because of what was said, rather than have this back and forth, you have the authority under our charter to hold a hearing. And I think you should because there were some serious allegations made by a commissioner who sat here for twenty-eight years. You can't just ignore that. So if she feels strongly about this and she thinks she's been wronged, she has a right to have that feeling, then-
She could file a grievance just like any employee can or other ones.
You guys have heard allegations from the, from the city manager, the interim city manager, and you heard from a former city commissioner. Have a hearing, have a, have an investigation. It's within your charter, do it. And let's get it settled. Thank you.
I wasn't saying there was any wrongdoing.
From the commissioner, yeah.
I'm trying to explain what I was accused of that's all over everywhere that are not true facts.
This record that she's reading of is, was between an employee and a commissioner. What Ms. Com, what Ms. Tony White, former Commissioner White, was stating was inconsistencies and standards of procedure. Two different animals here. I don't think there was anything that you were alluding to in your record that had to do with the actions that took place in a commissioner, in a commissioner overriding and, and giving, altercating authority and those kind of things. But you have a right to a grievance hearing just like anyone else if they'd like to proceed with that. And that is our, you know, our procedure, Mr. Lewandowski. But I will bring it back to something that I look at every night when we have meetings and that's in front of this podium, and it's a pledge of civility. And that is my commitment to you all until you want to move or elect me out by my constituents, is I will act with a form of civility as long as I'm a part of this team. So my commitment to you, all of y'all, not trying to be a peacemaker.
Did mine say one more thing?
Too many times we go without civility here in our actions and I think it's passion. I think it's vetted interest, but we get real emotional a lot of times. So, yes, ma'am.
Bill is correct. Anyone can stand there and it's, the way it's said, the tone that's said, and it's extremely personal. When you get up there and say, "I fired somebody because I'm retaliating against you," that's serious to me because I don't do that kind of stuff. So again, my character is being put out there, defamed, and I'm tired of it from the people. Some of these people that live here.
Absolutely.
I'm trying to do my job, so try to help instead of making negative comments nonstop.
And for you constituents and fellow citizens that are out there right now listening to this, it, Archer's, it's not the city-owned Archer Facebook page, but the, what is the other one called? The Facebook? Is that what it's called? Where, I mean, I'm sorry, I don't do Facebook, but that is out of control sometimes. It is, is just a ridiculous tool where that become, I mean, and if you follow it, I can see, because I don't even, my daughter-in-law's follow it just to tell me as your public servant, and I said, "I don't want to hear it." I mean, about, about me and accusation, and I could file a grievance if, if, if I took all of that. But that's not what I'm hired for. I got, you know, tough skin. I end up looking like Godzilla before I leave this post. I'm okay. Me and Mr. Lewandowski can bat all day, but I want him to be our planner someday. I want him to apply for the part-time city manager job. He said it doesn't pay enough for him, but I have people that differ with me, but I think you would be excellent, sir.
Part-time? I'll, I'll go for two hundred thousand a year.
That's why, I didn't say that to insult you. I said the pay is a joke. I mean, it's not enough for your steak dinner based on your experience, but I, the vetted loyalty is there, sir, is all I'm saying, you know? And we have the ability to agree to disagree and-
You throw in free beer?
I still, I still invite you to a planning session with me and you decline, sir. Because I didn't buy your ticket. By the way, that cost seventy dollars and it was my, huh? They had seats. All right, no one else to speak. This meeting's adjourned at nine thirty-two. Thank y'all very much for your diligence. Drive home safe. I will, Ms. Tanner. She's at home and first she's-